This just came out, so we're getting 7:57. Local receipts.
Glenn Pavelczek's doing a jig up on Kyle Road.
So it's a net out of almost 600 more.
Glenn's doing a jig up on Kyle Road.
Is the net still 300?
Right.
Ron, whittle it down between now and lunch.
Okay, I'm on.
We got about 400 grand.
Yeah. That's the governor.
And I think we're good to go. Good evening, I'm gonna call our January 23rd, 2019 meeting of the Town of Milton Select Board to order. I'm gonna begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd ask everyone to tend us to stand. You all right?
Yes, I am.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. So as I had mentioned to those in the room, just, I'm gonna jump out of order, which people at home should start to figure out that I'm good at that now. So we're gonna go right to item four, only because the Falcone's are due, this project is due the ZBA in 25 minutes, so if you're down, I'd ask Attorney McGettrick can bring whoever you like with you. Number four, this will be item four, this is a conference of the Falcone Properties LLC regarding Seven Pleasant Street, for everyone at home formerly known as Ben's Cookie Factory. And Attorney McGettrick had requested a brief meeting with us prior to their Board of Appeals meeting tonight to seek any additional comments or feedback. Many of us have already toured this location, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, thank you.
And I'm Mary McGettrick. And this is Steve Tedesco, he is the designer for the renovations to the GH Bent building. And as you probably know, Falcone Properties is the owner of the building, now they purchased it January 2017. They did an adverse possession claim in land court, they now own the right-of-way to the side of the building, so they own a little bit larger site than it was originally. The reason I'm here tonight is, we did invite members of the Board of Selectmen to tour the site and to tour the exterior, and I believe that all of you have done that, which I really appreciate, because it takes a lot of time.
We do as well.
And you have a lot of other things to do. So the reason to show you the site is that I think, for those of you who've been in Milton a long time, you're pretty familiar with the GH Bent building. If you've been here 40 years like me, you remember taking your kids to buy broken cookies at the store on the second floor, buying bread, and the bakery operation that's been there for many years, starting 1995. A new café was introduced on the first floor in place of the store, and that has been very popular with residents. It has undergone many, probably I think, four changes of ownership. And the reason, and that's building ownership. That's because nobody really has been able to generate enough revenue to keep this building in repair and to make a profit. Nobody's been making a profit, so the building has been sold. Finally, the Falcone's purchased it, they've made some investment already, they've already fixed up the outside. But they talked to me, starting about three years ago, about what possible new uses could be introduced in the building, along with the current uses which are popular, which are the office use and the café and a small caterer. And which of those uses might be least intrusive on the neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. The building's been there since 1895, so it is historic, it is a landmark, but zoning wasn't introduced till 1938. All during that period since 1895, this has been a commercial bakery. And the second floor of this building, which is the new, where the new use is proposed, is still a pre-existing non-conforming use as a commercial bakery. The bakery use has been continued by all of the owners. What we're proposing is to change the commercial bakery use on one floor of the building to two small apartments. Probably six, but the number of apartments is somewhat under discussion, we're meeting with the planning, with the Board of Appeals shortly, and the Planning Board again in February. This is a less intense use, and this is why. Because apartment use, these are really small, the largest is 600 square feet, will require only at most one parking space per apartment. And that's, there will be new created designated parking spaces on-site for each apartment. If the second floor of the building, the same amount of space, approximately 2,600 square feet, is used for commercial purposes, the commercial bakery use, our current zoning would require 11 parking spaces. Now the reason, it's pre-existing non-conforming, it isn't required if it continues, that use is not required to do any parking improvements. The current situation is that everybody parks on the street, they don't really use the site. Now that the right-of-way has been purchased, it could be improved and create some parking space. And if this proposal goes forward, the back wing added in 2009 with an apartment that's 1,500 square feet would be removed and would create some more space for parking. But that's all contingent on doing the apartments. So if you continue the pre-existing non-conforming bakery use, you don't make the improvements, or you don't have to. And you have a higher level of parking, and you definitely have more truck traffic. A commercial bakery today is gonna have a lot of large truck deliveries. It's not a good use, really, for this site, but that's what's going to happen unless we can come up with something else that works better. And so this proposal is being put forward because it is better. It's smaller, it's less intense, and because it requires a variance, because the multiple apartment use in a residential zone in our town, there's no zoning that provides for that. This is a mixed-use building, we have no zoning that provides for mixed use. Because we have to apply for a variance, we have to apply for site plan approval with the Planning Board, this is what our zoning requires, we do have to do a parking plan. We have to renovate the exterior grounds, we have to, and we are going to, well, the proposal is to put up a seven-foot natural cedar fence and thick vegetation all around the fence, all around the property, so that there will be screening, and there is no screening today. It's just an open site in back, there's a gravel driveway, there's a gravel parking area. The apartment, since it was built, has been used as an Airbnb. I don't suppose it's necessarily been the best neighbor for the neighbors, that apartment. But this use that's being proposed is not gonna be that type of use. These will be long-term, one-year or longer leases, there will be conditions, the Falcone's have a lot of rental property and they're very experienced in managing it. But the leases will require no smoking in the rear of the building, no smoking in the building, no more than one car, and there's no on-street legal parking in Milton, so you can only have one car if you rent one of these apartments. No pets, and a number, there'll be other provisions. You can't do any short-term, you'll be prohibited from doing any short-term rental, which means no Airbnb or anything like that. So the amount and level of activity is, we project to be much less than what a commercial bakery activity would be. So that's the spiel. We're going to the Board of Appeals, we've been there once already. I gave them an 18-page memo at the first hearing, and I think I sent it to the members of this board. There's plenty of background material that I've given you, but the bottom line is, it's an unusual proposal for a very unusual property. These, we don't have that many buildings left, and they're going because if you can't find a way to reuse an historic building, and they never have adequate parking, because in those days, there weren't even cars in 1895. Can't find a way to reuse it, then it'll limp along in its current condition with its continuing use, it will be intrusive on the neighborhood, or it will go eventually. We have a demolition delay bylaw, but we're not prohibited from taking this building down. So this is Steve Tedesco, he's the designer for the building, he's also the chairman of the Lindfield Historic Commission. This is something that he really enjoys and does as a specialty. So he's done a lot of work on this project, and he's even made a 3D model that we're taking to the Board of Appeals.
This would be a dream, dream project for our town, but we don't have too many properties like this.
One of the building to your town, is that what you're saying?
We'd love to, we'd take it in a minute.
Mr. Falcone knows this?
We'd take it in a minute, we talked about it.
For price.
Everything's for price. But you know, you look at this building, and it just, it says to me, it says residential, it's residential, it's a residential neighborhood. It's a great opportunity to bring this back to life with, you know, with the new café downstairs, remodel the café, the existing offices, of course, would stay. But the opportunity here to carve out this space, you know, with the right-of-way, with the trees and the fencing, and you just think it enhances the site so well, and it just fits in so much better in the, on the street than it did before. I mean, when I first looked at this project, I'm sure we're all familiar with it, it was a dilapidated building, it wasn't, it wasn't very attractive. And the Falcone's, to date, have put a lot of money into the buildings, it's a facade, and they've already done these facade improvements, and the window replacements, and the, you know, the awnings are gonna be going up. So what we're proposing here is just a very simple penetration of the enhancement of the existing facade, maybe with a trellis here, a little café on the side, an open café, that would work off the bakery, and that would be about it. Cleaning up the stone, the original stone, and putting a new fence in. This particular structure here would be in addition to, for the, this is an elevator override, we're putting in a new elevator in the building, all new egress, everything will be updated. And you know, the more we looked at the site, and you know, you look at this without the, without the, we took the, we're proposing removing the back section of there where that existing apartment was, that Airbnb thing. And it was, it's, you can see here on the site plan what it does for the parking, it just opens it up, it's easy to turn, pull in, pull out, and it just opens the space up beautifully, and it's all enhanced with this upgraded landscaping. So that's, you know, again, when I look at this, you know, we see, from the Historical Commission's side, we see a wonderful opportunity here, to, you know, as an addition, a beautiful addition to a neighborhood, an existing neighborhood. And we're proposing five, six, two-bedroom, two-bedroom, I mean, three one-bedroom apartments, three studio apartments, I mean, five or six tenants. And you know, they're small-scale, we refer to them as micro. And I think once that word "micro" got out, we were getting all this bombardment, it's created this lightning rod of, oh, you know, boarding house, boarding rooms. It's, I mean, boarding houses were boarding houses, you know, there's one bathroom for, you know, five units, one kitchen for five units. These all have, these all have individual, you know, they're gonna have their own washer-dryers, fully-applined kitchen, modernized kitchen, modern appliances, you know, air conditioning, and you know, the whole nine yards. They're beautiful apartments, but they're small, it gives people an opportunity to move into the area, it's wonderful. You know, people that maybe want to move into Milton and can't afford to buy a house or a larger, or rent a larger apartment. And to me, it just makes so much sense, it just gives an opportunity for people, it's all about community, you know, the community, it gives people in the community an opportunity. It's opportunities to live in a great area, you know, to live here, to have the café downstairs, and to, you know, interact with the, you know, with the neighbors, and I think it's just, it's a great thing. Instead of having a, you know, we could put a commissary there, you know, for, for...
Right, legally, right.
Yeah, legally. You know, we could have trucks and this and that going up, and there's gravel road there, and the gravel, the trucks should be on the gravel, the decibel level of the trucks running on the gravel would be greater than having two people having a quiet conversation in the back, you know, going into the building, decibel-wise. So again, you know, it's, I thought it was a very exciting opportunity to get involved in a project like this, and you know, and I just love to see it, love to see it work through. And hopefully, we can address all of the issues of, you know, the concerns of the neighborhood and work with them, and, but I think at the end, I think everybody's gonna be really, I think we'll all be very proud of this, this beautiful piece of property on Pleasant Street, that it wasn't, you know, 10 years ago, five years ago.
So, just to say, I know you don't have much time, we don't have much time either, because we have to go over to...
I'm watching your clock, you're all right.
We wanna know whether you have more questions, we wanna know what you think. The Board of Appeals wanted us to make sure that the Board of Selectmen were aware of this. Having many years ago served on the board, I know that you don't always wanna assume control of a project that isn't yours, you have enough to do. But everybody looks to you to kind of gets, I guess, to see, as a sounding board. We're asking you to be a little bit of a sounding board tonight. If you have comments, we'd like to hear them, I'll write them down. I'm going right to the Board of Appeals, I'm gonna report, you know, anything you tell me. I guess that's a little dangerous, but that's what I'm saying, is whatever you wanna tell me, go ahead.
I think they make it easy to, some of us, I know I did, did any, how many wrote comments that went to the chair? Did anyone write comments? Other than, I know I did.
I didn't write them.
I did, I sent comments to the chair. All right, so go ahead then.
That's great, okay, so that's fine, but, well, if you'd like to allow that.
I'll go last, I'll go last. I'm going to go to the back of the line with this crew. Anyone?
I have comments, but I'm happy to, if anyone else wants to speak first? Go ahead, Katie.
Go ahead, you started, it's all yours.
Right, well, I know, Mary, and the Board of Appeals often doesn't like to grant a use variance, because, or at least they're skeptical, and they have a lot of concerns about granting a use variance. So I'm glad you gave us a tour, thank you very much for the tour, I'm glad you submitted all of the written materials to us. I did not read all of the waiver requests, but, so I'll just speak to the big picture and the concept, really. I support your plan, I like the fact that it's a less intensive use than what could potentially be there if it were a commercial use. It would help us diversify our housing stock, which is something that we all know that we need. We don't have many apartments in Milton, and I think this would be a good opportunity for young people who would like to return to the town, maybe grew up here, or maybe didn't, but would like, and they're looking for some, a small unit, or maybe even for someone who's downsizing, who's lived in the town for a long time. So this would give us some diversity in our housing stock, help us to preserve a historic asset, which I would really like to see preserved, and this seems to be the best way to do it. And I like the fact that you're not going to allow any Airbnb and short-term rentals, this is gonna be, I guess, one-year leases, is that?
Minimum one year.
Minimum one year. So I think those are all good points, as well as the fact that we have a local developer, the Falcone family, that's owned it, will be managing it, they have a lot of experience with rentals, I think, I think their proposal has been very good. And I did watch some of the Board of Appeals meeting, I didn't see all of it, I saw some of the Planning Board discussion. I know that there were some concerns by some neighbors, I know other neighbors are in support of it, so count me in support of it, I think it's a good proposal.
Thank you.
I also toured the property and attended the Planning Board meeting. And I agree, as Chair of the Housing Committee, I think this project is actually a good test case for the town, to see what happens when we put smaller units in. I think that people have been waiting for some data, to see what the real demand is, and the fact that we can preserve this historic asset and do that at the same time, I think is a unique opportunity. I really appreciate the 3D model. That helps me understand a little better some of the neighbors' concerns, and I think, listening to the Falcone's, that they've tried to be sensitive, and Mr. Tedesco's design, and the engineer's design is good. And I just, I know that it needs to be economically feasible, but if there's maybe a way to, you said up to six units, if it makes a difference to make one unit larger or something like that, just to, just to look at that and see maybe what happens. But I'm very excited to see it go forward. I would not like to see Bent's torn down. And I think it, it's a creative reuse, and could be a model for some other properties in town.
I agree. Go ahead.
Yeah, I too think it's a very innovative proposal, I think it could meet a need in town. I was struck by the actual, the lessening of the parking demand, by taking out that big unit in the back and making it into the six smaller units, that really struck me. I wondered, I don't know if it's possible or useful, if one of the units could be affordable, I don't know if that's, it's probably too small for it to have that much of an impact, but we could, I guess maybe I'd ask you just to keep that in mind, but I think it's a very innovative proposal, it could meet a real need in town, so I'm similarly supportive as my colleagues are.
So just one quick, 'cause I did have this to follow up to Michael's. So because they're, I know micros are big in everywhere, Boston, Somerville, Cambridge, they just, micros are essentially affordables in their own right, 'cause they're so small that it almost makes them affordable by right, am I correct or no?
It's all relative. As you know, rents are very high in Boston, and Cambridge, and Somerville, and all around the Boston area, and we don't know what the rents will be, we don't even know what the market will be when this is finished. If it's smaller, then there's comparatively going to be some reduction in the cost. We haven't planned this as an affordable project, because it's too small. We're certainly aware of that interest and concern in part of the town. We don't, you know, with, some talk about whether it's six units, possibly five units, there's one apartment that's very small, you know, 240 square feet. So, but you know, if you take the smallest one out, then you also take the one out that's likely to have the lower price. It's a studio, and it would appeal to somebody who's earning enough to pay a market rent, but doesn't really, can't afford a whole large apartment, but could possibly come here. So you know, there's those considerations, I know the Board of Appeals is gonna be carefully looking at this. I really appreciate your comments, I wrote down notes, I'm gonna, you know, send them back to the Board of Appeals if you don't mind. It's the best I can do, in terms of trying to give them feedback from you. And I have a, I'm just gonna leave this with you, this is just an aerial view of the site, this is the best, this is second-best, but it does have measurements to nearby residences, so it gives you some idea of how far away or how close everyone is. But the main point is, that we're putting in fencing and we're putting in vegetated buffer. It's not the distance, the feet, which we have to get the variance for, because up in the back there, we're right up against the lotline, but there's nothing back there, there are no houses. Excuse me, the owner in the back, Gregory Zazula, is in favor of this project. So anyway, enough, I bet we're at 7:30, so...
No, I know, and I just wanna, just add just quickly, and I agree with all my colleagues, you know, one of the things that this adds to our community is the diversity in housing that we don't currently have right now. We don't have anything really like this. And to your credit, for everyone who's at home, and those who don't know your work, when I came on the police department 35 years ago, sometimes I walked the square-est of a walking beat, and there was a movie theater there, that closed, I think, my second year on the job, and for 20-some-odd years, that building, similar to Bent's, an old historic 1920's, sat dead, essentially. And that's when I first met you, and I watched you every day for, I think, two years, brick by brick, take that building and bring it back to life today, and it lives and breathes, and has become a vibrant part of our community as Navara. And so I know the type of work that you're going to do, and I'm very comfortable that when this is done, the excitement that you articulate in your description of this will become real and will live in our community, and I'm very grateful for that, so thank you.
Thank you very much for the time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll get it in 20 minutes, and I, good luck. Okay, we're gonna jump back to item two, which is gonna begin with a public hearing, and I'm gonna ask John O'Rourke of Good Energy LP to come and join us. And just for the purpose of this, I'm going to read this, this is a notice of public hearing, this is a continuation of a hearing which began, I don't remember the date, our last meeting.
January 9th.
Last meeting.
Could we forget?
I know. On May 7th of 2018, the residents of the Town of Milton, at the annual town meeting, passed the Municipal Aggregation Warrant article, municipal officials with the assistance of aggregation consultant Good Energy LP researched and developed a municipal aggregation plan for submission to the Department of Public Utilities, also known for the purposes of this hearing as the Department, for approval pursuant to General Law Chapter 164, Section 134, which authorizes the municipality to procure electric supply on behalf of consumers within its municipal borders through a municipal aggregation program. As I noted, we held a public hearing on January 9th for residents to wish, may want to make an oral comments. Mr. O'Rourke could not be with us, so I'm gonna begin by opening with you tonight, Ms. Ron, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Town Administrator, for allowing me to come before you tonight. I apologize for January 9th, I was about halfway here when my water pump decided to stop working on the turnpike, so that was kind of an adventure. But here we are. And basically, what I wanna do is let you know where we are in the process to finish up your public review process and your public hearing, and move the proposal forward to the Department of Energy Resources. I know that, I understand that Michael went through this with you on the 9th, so I'll go through it very quickly, just to refresh where you are in the process. Of course, you went to town meeting on May 7th, 2018, and the residents voted and passed the Municipal Aggregation Warrant. We developed a plan in accordance with Chapter, MGL, Chapter 164, Section 134A, and the requirements of the Department of Public Utilities. From November 29th to December 13th, you had a two-week public review period required by the DPU. Again, since, since we're here, ending this now, actually, that review process has been in force for longer than that two-week period. The public hearing is just to end that process. During the period, you collected any written comments that residents may have had on the review, and tonight, you can take any oral comments. Those written and oral comments become part of the plan that's submitted to the Department of Energy Resources for their consultation. Once they have gone through their consultation, they give us what is known as a consultation letter. That allows us to submit the plan to the Department of Public Utilities. Recently, the Department of Energy Resources, rather than conducting an in-person consultation, they used to do, the Deputy General Counsel, who had retired from DOER, was very meticulous, and he used to hold an hour to a two-hour consultation, where he went over just about every word in the plan with municipal officials from the towns that were involved in the consultation, and with members of our team. That has progressed to the point where our last six or eight consultations have been by conference call, and they've lasted anywhere from 15 to 20 minutes. And because essentially, that first, if there are any tweaks that the Department of Energy Resources wants to do, they suggest those at that consultation, and then we tweak the plan, they give us a letter to move forward, the consultation letter, and that goes to, that again becomes part of the plan and goes to the Department of Energy Resources, I mean, the Department of Public Utilities. They go through an appraisal process, and the timeline, which is on 6. Usually, DOER has the consultation anywhere, their time period is anywhere from one to two months. Once that's given to the Department of Public Utilities, that approval process takes six to eight months. And again, the attorneys at the Department of Energy Resources go over the plan very carefully, to make sure that it's in conformance with the law and the regulations of a DPU. Then the DPU lawyers look at the plan, and they go through it for six to eight months. They have a public hearing, okay? That public hearing requires a face-to-face, again, those public hearings have been trimmed down quite a bit, too, they rarely last more than 15, 20 minutes. But again, it's one of those, it's one of those requirements in the law. The way these plans are today, we have over 120 municipalities in Massachusetts that have approved plans. So these, these documents have been basically 99% perfected, so the tweaks and the clarifications are usually very minor, they're usually not substantial at all. So essentially, even though it takes six to eight months for the DPU, because they have a situation where there is no statutory requirement that they follow a strict timetable for these plans. So very often, these plans get put on the back burner because of other statutory deadline requirements. For instance, in a group of six we had that were up for approval... For instance, um, uh, in, in a, a group of six we had that were, were up for approval, uh, that should have been approved sometime in September, they weren't approved until December because of, uh, the natural gas problems in Lawrence, Andover, North Andover. And basically that was a, an all hands on deck situation for the DPU. So it took them a little longer to, to get those processed. Once, uh, DPU has given us the okay on the plan, they've approved the plan, they've issued the order, uh, then we go through a, an implementation process that takes normally two to two and a half months. Uh, we get data from Eversource, uh, to get the load shape and, uh, the amount of, uh, load for the municipality. Uh, we get indicative pricing from competitive suppliers. And again, uh, these competitive suppliers are national companies. We only deal with the, uh, the major companies that can handle this kind of a situation. Uh, we conduct a competitive bid. Uh, usually that, uh, is, we have either three, four, sometimes five, uh, bidders. And you get bids, uh, anywhere from 12, 18, 24, 30, 36 months. Uh, on the day of the bid, you get a, uh, the bids come in, we put them in a, in a grid and whoever the select board designates, um, makes a decision on, on moving forward. And again, before bid day, you have indicative pricing, so you know, uh, within a very small range where that pricing is going to come in, so there are no surprises. Uh, we generally, once a bid is accepted, we generally mail out a postcard to the residents in town who are eligible to enter the program. Those are the, those are the people who are on the basic service of Eversource. Anyone who has already picked an alternative supplier does not get a postcard or a customer notification letter, uh, because they're not marketed to. If at a later time after their contract ends, they want to come into the program, they can do that. Uh, the postcards go out, about a week later, the letters go out, which are customer notification letters. It's a two-page letter that's approved by the Department of Public Utilities and essentially, um, that gives residents, uh, everything they need to know about the program and to make a decision to either, uh, participate by, by essentially not doing anything, it's automatic enrollment, or they can opt out because they have an opt-out card, uh, that's, that's, uh, with the mailing. Uh, essentially, we find that, that normally, um, about 90% of the eligible customers, um, will, will participate in the plan. Uh, and essentially, we, we've found with most of our aggregations that over time, those people who have opted out in the beginning realize it's, it's a good thing and they come into the, to plan later on. So it's, um, uh, it's, it's good that way. Uh, the opt-out period is required by law to be 30 days, uh, but actually, uh, the regulations of DPU have extended that to 36 days for mailings, uh, three days in the front and three days in the back to make sure that, that everybody gets, um, uh, the mailing in a timely manner and can get their, uh, opt-outs if they want to opt out in, uh, before the end of the period. Uh, once that's done, there's a final enrollment of participating customers, uh, and they're switched to the competitive supplier on the next meet or read date. Um, essentially, what happens, um, during the end of the, uh, the DPU period, as we're getting to the end of that, and during the, uh, the two to two and a half months, we do some intensive, uh, public outreach and marketing, uh, for the residents, uh, to make sure that everybody understands what's going to come down for them. Uh, we do press releases to the regional local newspapers. Uh, we do public access TV. Uh, if, if, uh, we have videos that can go on, on TV or on, on YouTube. Uh, we do social media, uh, if you have active social media in town. Um, we have an informational website that people can go to. It has a very comprehensive, uh, frequently asked questions section that covers just about everything. Uh, we have printed materials that we, we put in municipal offices. Uh, we have public information meetings. These are particularly useful for, uh, the council on aging because certainly, or, or the, or the senior centers, because, uh, very often it's seniors that don't quite understand what's happening. Uh, so we want to make sure that, uh, we communicate with them on a face-to-face basis at these meetings. Uh, we will do as many, um, public face-to-face meetings as you want to make sure, again, everybody, uh, understands what's happening. And essentially what this does, uh, this reduces any calls that come into a town hall. Any calls that do come in, they're referred to, to me and my two colleagues that cover, cover the area. Uh, we take care of all that. The last thing we want is, is municipal officials burdened with any of this. We do all the heavy lifting. Uh, you do the decision-making. That's the way this works. Uh, we have call center access, uh, with the, with the supplier who answers questions. Uh, and essentially, uh, we have some, you know, we, this is the most important part of this whole, uh, plan is to make sure that the public outreach and education, uh, informs residents about what is happening. Uh, and essentially, that's right here where we are now. Again, you have the public hearing. After your public hearing, um, you should vote to, um, accept the plan and to have it go to, uh, the Department of Energy Resources for the start of their consultation process. Have you, have you gotten any written comments, Michael?
Not since you last responded.
Okay.
And I will say Mr. O'Rourke was very responsive to the four responses through the, through the end of the, that, that public process.
Okay, okay. And tonight, if, if there are any oral comments or oral questions, I'd be happy to, to answer any of those.
Just for colleagues, anyone, anybody? No, I mean, I, it's, um, can I ask you to slide to the chair right beside you and the gentleman is going to come up and I'll recognize, Mr. Johanning, you can come up and we'll take any comments you have.
Thank you.
And, um, thank you for coming back. I know this is your second time here on this. For those at home, Mr. O'Rourke lives in Conway, Massachusetts, which I'm not even, what county is that?
It's Franklin County.
So that's a ride. That's a good ride.
Normally, if I tell people it's five minutes west of Yankee Candle, they know where it is.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Johanning?
Okay, um, I'm not an expert in this, but I do handle it for my company, which is, is fairly small. And, uh, it sounds so complicated when you speak about it, but to me, it seems like something fairly simple. Um, we work with a company called Power Management. Um, we do two to three-year contracts into the future. Uh, over a year ago, we, uh, made a contract with NG in December 2017, uh, for 24 months. We pay 8.8 cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, we just got finished, uh, last September, making, uh, an extension of three years, starting in December 2019, uh, with Constellation for 8.3 cents. So we reduced our energy costs by half a cent, um, going forward. We also work with Power, uh, Management to do gas and, uh, we work with Spark now. We're going to work with Constellation after our, our contract. So it seems to me fairly simple. Uh, there, there are a number of companies out there who do this. Um, we don't pay the company. Uh, I guess they must receive a commission from NG or Constellation. And so I have a couple of questions. One is, how much is, um, how much is your company being paid for its, uh, consulting work? Uh, the other thing is, are there towns who do this on their own without a consultant? And you mentioned that the, the process is getting simpler and simpler as more towns are doing this. So I wonder, is, is there not an equivalent of a model, a model type of, of process that someone could follow, uh, apart from a, from a consultant? And then I wonder, uh, are we talking about fixed prices for multiple years? Is that typically how it goes? Um, also, I wonder, um, is there reporting, reporting from the town to the people who, who are part of this arrangement? Uh, does the reporting tell, like, on a monthly basis, what would be the difference between the Eversource supply rate and the, uh, and the whoever's supply rate? So that people could make, uh, going forward, make decisions about whether they want to continue to participate or they want to drop out? Uh, so again, it, it seems to me like this, the process is getting simpler. So I wonder, is it really necessary to have a consultant? And I wonder, um, how much are you being paid to complete this process? And I wonder, uh, are these multi-year arrangements? Are these fixed-price arrangements? Um, you know, uh, and, uh, is the reporting going forward?
Okay, let's take one question at a time. Now, you say you, you do this for, uh, a business?
Uh, you know, it's a, a minute part of my job.
Okay, but you're dealing with commercial accounts, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And essentially, you're not aggregating, you're just, you're just brokering for those, for those businesses.
And these people, Power Management, wouldn't work with the municipality. So I understand that there's a difference.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're doing commercial industrial accounts. We also have a large, uh, commercial and industrial side of our business as well. Uh, that's one of the reasons why we are in the market every day and we know, you know, what the prices are and when the right times are to bid for these aggregations.
So you're doing essentially what Power Management does. You're watching the future rates and you're locking in as it appears. The rates are getting to a, a very good level based on your knowledge of the market.
We, we have, we have a whole team that does nothing but watch the market every day. And again, we have a large, a large commercial and industrial clientele. So, you know, we're, we're always renewing contracts. We're always in the market. We always know where it is. So that helps us tremendously in terms of the municipal aggregations and knowing when to go out to bid. For instance, um, we had a renewal, um, of 23 communities, 23 community aggregation, uh, that started in January of 2018. Uh, rather than wait to the fall of 2017 to renew their contract, uh, for their first renewal, we did their renewal in March of 2017 because our analyst said to us, this is the time to bid that contract. And we got them a very good, a very good rate going forward for three years.
So these are fixed, fixed-rate, multi-year contracts?
We deal, we deal mostly in fixed-rate contracts. We've had three occasions where we've done a step, where we had a six-month and then for another 18 months, it stepped up a bit because we started in the summer rate, okay? And we wanted to make sure we were below that, that adjustment for the summer, okay? But normally, normally, if, if at all possible, we'll start at the, at, at the shoulder months in the fall, we'll start the programs. Uh, essentially, after we know, uh, again, what, like, like national grid rates will come out in the middle of September for their, their adjustment as of November 1. Uh, and the, the middle of, uh, November is when the rates come out for Eversource for their January 1 adjustment. So that's when we like to, to clue in the market. Essentially, again, there are times when, okay, even though we start it in that, in that period, we may, we may go and, and do the bid six to nine months before. But essentially, uh, we deal in fixed-rate contracts and, and the municipality has a choice of, uh, anywhere from, we, we do, we do a grid of one year, 18 months, 24 months, 30 months, 36 months. Uh, we've had towns that wanted to go beyond 36 months and we've advised, we've advised against that because sometimes there's a sweet spot in three years, okay, that you can, you can look at and see. Uh, to go beyond that, that time period, uh, gets, gets too risky. So we, we don't advise that. And essentially, most of our contracts are, are two years or 30 months. Uh, because again, that was when bidding in this last year, those were the sweet spots. And again, you know, we look at things like capacity, uh, in the different load zones. Uh, you know, you had a situation in, in the NEMA load zone, the northeast, uh, back in 2017, that there was a big spike. Uh, so we had the city of Gloucester, who had just, uh, come out and had their program approved, we had to wait, we had to wait 18 months before we took them out to get bid because of that capacity spike. We're just getting over a capacity spike now in the SEMA load zone that will end in May. So we have a number of towns that are going to come out, uh, again, in May and they'll probably be a stepped, uh, a stepped contract with them, unless they want to wait till, till the end of the year. Uh, there's no cost to the municipality. Include, we do everything that's included in, in our fee, which is, uh, one mil per kilowatt hour, which is paid by the competitive supplier.
So this is completely free to the town?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So it's the same arrangement as Power Management?
I, I don't know how they, what they.
Well, I know I don't pay them, so.
Okay, okay. Well, that's good.
Um, so, uh, so what you're saying is, it, it doesn't really matter how much time you spend, um, with the state, with the hearings, with all this stuff. You're being reimbursed by some third party?
That, our fee is fixed, okay?
There is a fee to the town.
No, no, no. Our, our fee is fixed, um, based on the volume, okay?
Okay.
But essentially, what, what our objective is not to have a client for, you know, one, one-year, two-year, three-year contract. We want, we want that client for 15 years, 20 years. So we have to do an excellent job for that client. So we're not concerned about what it costs, okay? We're concerned about the longevity of that client with us.
So I guess the last thing I, I had asked about was reporting back to the consumers in Milton on a monthly, quarterly basis, something like that, via, uh, email or something from the town or posting on the website so that we can, um, have, uh, a refresh of our information so that we know, okay, here's the Eversource rate, here's the rate I'm getting, I'm getting a good deal, I'm saving money.
We have, um, we have an informational website that stays in place. Uh, and essentially, uh, we, we have calculators on that website that, that customers can go, go to to calculate how they're doing and compare to the, to the utility rate. Um, we have to do reporting to DPU on an annual basis. Uh, we collect information on a monthly basis from the suppliers, so we know how the town is doing. That information is available to the select board, okay? So, and, and again.
So it's up to the select board to report to us if they want to do that?
And I'm sure we'd do that. And whether we post it, whether we have them in for an annual report, as we do of just about every other committee and entity that we deal with here, government.
It, it's extremely important to be transparent with those things.
It is.
Okay. And, and essentially, you know, that's certainly one of our objectives, is to make sure the customers have the information they want. Um, we have, we, we do some special reports for some of our towns that, that have, you know, requested them. We're doing, uh, we're doing some data mining. Uh, one of our towns, uh, Somerville, we do Somerville, uh, and they're very interested. We're working with a, um, with a statistician from Columbia, um, who is, who is a, you know, genius statistician. He's doing data mining, um, because essentially, they want to know, they want to do a deep dive into their data to find out how they can motivate people to do more green energy. Uh, certainly one of, one of our objectives, uh, you know, in our programs, the most popular model, you have three options. Uh, the basic, or, or the standard option is one that's 5% more than the RPS requirement. Then you have a basic option that's equal to the RPS requirement and a 100% option for those that want additional green. So it satisfies everyone. It satisfies the person that just wants economics with the basic. The standard has a little more, that 5% more green. And when you look at, at some of the towns we're dealing with that had that 5%, you, you multiply it by 10,000 or 20,000 households, it's a tremendous boom for financing new renewable energy projects in, in Massachusetts. And that's essentially, they're all Class 1 recs.
So it's the town's option?
Yes, oh, it, absolutely. Uh, we, we've found that, that that's the most, uh, the most popular model. And then, you know, you have those people that want to go 100% green, okay? So we have that option for them too. And essentially, we deal, um, with Mass Energy Consumers Alliance. They used to be, now they're Green, Green Energy Consumers Alliance. They are the gold standard in Massachusetts, as far as Massachusetts Class 1 recs. Uh, and essentially, um, you know, we buy our recs from them. And essentially, you know, we buy our RECs from them and essentially, anyone else who has additionality with their RECs because that, that's important.
Okay. Thanks a lot. I appreciate it.
All right. Let me give you my card. If you have any other questions, don't hesitate to call me.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anybody else? We're going to swing back around. So at this time, going to close this hearing? Or do we need to vote while the hearing's still open?
After the hearing usually.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna close this hearing. And then I'd accept a motion to approve the municipal aggregation plan and submit it to the DOE consultation and DPU for approval. Someone would like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal aggregation plan and submit it for Department of Energy Resources' consultation and Department of Public Utilities' approval.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the board-
Thank you. Safe home.
Thank you. And again, anytime you have questions, please, please. And essentially, you know, if you get questions, Michael, refer them to me.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Number five, we're gonna confirm future meeting dates, February 6th and February 20th, if necessary, and for the special town meeting on February 25th. Hopefully, not the 26th, but those would be the four dates.
I'm not going to be available on the 20th, but I, you know, the board should feel free to meet if you need to, but I just, you know, I'm not able to be-
Is the 20th school vacation?
It is school vacation week.
I'm away, I'm away that week.
Okay.
It would have been, it would have been the 27th, which wouldn't have made much sense right after town.
So why don't we go with the 6th and 25th right now if something comes up? Not on vacation, vacation week, excuse me, we'll make it happen as we always do. How's that? Okay? Okay, thank you. Number six, does anyone here for Citizen Speak? Mr. Joe Henning.
Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive. I, I read the article in the Milton Times and I didn't understand it about the depreciation error that had been made and the consequences for the town budget. And I was hoping that someone could explain to me how that occurred and what it meant for the town. It seemed peculiar to me. I've been a controller for probably over 40 years and, you know, it seems to me that these things are fairly simple, like there are programs and you plug in your fixed assets and there are, there are rules that are written about depreciable life and method, the method of depreciation and things like that. Maybe I've completely misunderstood the, the article, but it seemed drastic and extreme. I wondered, how many years has this gone on for? I wondered, how did this happen? I wondered, you know, who is accountable for this? And I wondered, what does our accounting firm do when they review these things? Like, do they look at depreciation? Did they notice the error? Is it a multi-year error, a single-year error? What kind of error is it? So I was hoping to get some type of explanation for this because it's something that seems relatively simple to me. I've never had an issue with depreciation in, in my working life. I've never had any auditor who's reviewed any business where I've ever worked question depreciation. It's so basic. So, you know, maybe I completely misunderstood the article. It wasn't that clear and it didn't really talk about the cause, the duration, the consequence. But I do wonder, who takes responsibility? Who, who is reprimanded? In what fashion are they reprimanded? What about the accounting firm? Were they responsible? Was that in their scope of responsibility? And what happens to them? And finally, I guess, I was wondering, how often do we rebid the accounting firm for the town and the attorney for the town and all those professional-type people? How often do we look at making substitutions, getting new quotes, things like that? Maybe if I was here every meeting, I would know, but, but I don't know that and I'm curious about it.
So I'm gonna hold our, obviously, we don't respond till number 22, but-
Sure.
Mr. Dennehy will gladly call you tomorrow if that's all right with you. Is that okay?
Sure. But it would be nice if the whole public could, could know.
We'll talk about that a little bit when we get to-
Okay.
Sure.
22, if that's all right. Okay?
Thank you. I'm just gonna finish this and get out of the seat.
Anybody else? Okay. We've got item seven, which is a conference with Tom Callahan from our Housing Committee with an update, present the committee's goals and progress to date.
Let's see, not just you.
I believe you alone.
Well, Melinda. Melinda's gonna-
She's open, you can stay there. You can stay there.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
You have one. Yours.
Thank you.
What was yours?
Okay. So, Jen, are you manning the? Thank you. You know my, my limitations of speaking and, so, thank you very much. I, I want to thank the board, first of all, for taking an interest in housing and creating this committee. So if we can just introduce, everyone is not here on the, on the committee. Richard Beeler is traveling, but he's our, Richard is our planning board rep and Tom Callahan is the rep for the Affordable Housing Trustees. And actually, Kathleen Conlon is our representative for the Master Plan Implementation Committee and I represent the select board. Lauren Mazier is a non-voting member who is really our technical assistance-
That's a nuts and bolts together, correct?
Yes, from the, the planning department. So our purpose is to study current and trending housing needs, to advance the vision and goals of the housing production plan and master plan, coordinate the collaboration of a variety of advisors, stakeholders, professionals, and to promote the vitality of Milton through best practices in community development by paving the way for projects, supporting legislation, regulations, and strategies that address residents' housing concerns, support boards and committees in housing-related matters, and educate ourselves and the public. So the Housing Production Plan goal statement says that the town of Milton will build its future as a livable community on the careful stewardship of its historic past, key natural resources, and the creative development of key parcels to provide economic and housing opportunities in keeping with the residential character of the community. That's directly out of the Housing Production Plan. We thought it would be useful just to refresh everybody's memory because it was approved in 2014. And Tom, I don't know if you'd like to say anything about some of the specific goals that are outlined in the presentation?
Well, I think, I mean, it's, I think it's a, we're at a sort of, I think, exciting time here in Milton with a number of things coming together, right? We've got a lot of development pressure, 40B proposals are in the occasion of that. For a long time, we've known about the various housing pressures on people in Milton, right? I've told the story about our own house is probably, used to be considered a starter home and it's probably, we're no, we're not moving, but, you know, probably go for $550 and that's-
There was back there writing down, going down your address.
So, so if that's the affordable starter home in Milton, we clearly have a crisis of, of first-time homebuyers not being able to buy into town, not to mention seniors who struggle with housing costs, other low-income renters. So we really, I think, have an opportunity with maybe something happening in four acres of Town Farm, trying to figure out what to do with 40B proposals that come our way that we might want to shape in, in our interests as opposed to just the developers' interests. Kinder Library is another opportunity. So I think there's, there's no question we need to sort of grapple with a lot of these issues and grapple with different types of housing stock needs and affordability concerns. But I think it's been really exciting to be a member of the Housing Committee as well as the Affordable Housing Trust because, and the communication between the two bodies has been excellent. So I think I can feel some momentum building.
Right. And we're, we're trying to, to-
And Melinda's leadership has been tremendous, so, thank you.
And we're, we're trying to, to reach out to the other housing-related bodies in, in town, too. And to Tom's point about starter homes, we're part of the Home Consortium in this area and we've had to leave our funds, which actually expire because we don't have houses at $300,000 and under. So that, that just shows you, I mean, there are these funds just sitting there.
Generally used for down payment assistance and-
Exactly.
Our, our, we don't have housing stock that's-
That meets the high-income code.
Yeah, that a person making below 80% of area median, you know, could, could afford to buy and therefore qualify for that down payment assistance.
Right. So I noted here, talking about the, the full range of incomes and promoting social and economic diversity and the stability of individuals and families, that's the first production plan goal. So Suburban Remix, which is a webinar that the planning department has been using for data, says that approximately 80% of new households will be singles and couples. Higher-income households are moving to cities, which continues to put pressure on our housing Housing Production Plan goal two is to leverage other public and private resources to the greatest extent possible because we're a small town that doesn't really receive much federal funding for affordable housing on an entitlement basis. We need creative strategies to meet both regulatory requirements and our own vision and goals. And the Housing Production Plan also identifies a range of strategies and you have, I handed out a grid, it's the top sheet. Some of those, the master plan takes note of, using transit-oriented development in places where it makes sense, like Milton Village. And recent trends in cities and towns has demonstrated that building sort of the right types of housing actually revitalizes downtowns. And we were just at the MMA conference, the Municipal-
Mass Municipal Association.
Mass Municipal Association Conference, yes. And there was, there was a whole session on, on how that revitalizes downtowns. And then goal three, to preserve the existable, existing affordable housing stock, including the diversity of prices and building types and lot sizes. So the second sheet is the SHI, the subsidized housing inventory. And in 2020, we just found out there are 120 units coming up. So that's really our first order of business is to get those protected. It's really important. That's a, that's a large portion of what we actually have, although to, Katie's made the really great point that we do have housing in which people who are at 80% of area median income and maybe even lower, you know, are housed in Milton and are making use of other kinds of programs in order to hang on. And we don't get credit for those. So this is a really difficult, it's a difficult environment in a regulatory way, but also for people economically. So we need to find other ways to support affordability, too. People often have questions about area median income and so on the next slide, I just put in some data about what that looks like. Extremely low income is 30% of area median income, 50% is very low, and 80% is low income. And if you look at that, for, for one person, you go down, that's an accountant or a police officer or a teacher, very low income. People in interior design, I know that we're used to the big splashy things on TV, but the average person, that's not a bus driver, extremely low. Home healthcare workers who take care of us and funeral attendants. I was at a funeral yesterday, people did a fabulous job and, and made everybody feel so much better. And you think about the fact that they're having trouble keeping, finding and keeping housing, so just to put a human face on it. So since the committee started meeting in September, we've reviewed and reprioritized the Housing Production Plan, collected a databank of town-owned and state-owned parcels, reviewed the subsidized housing inventory, which I talked about, and applied for technical assistance from Citizens Housing and Planning Association. And we didn't get that technical assistance because we aren't really far enough along, but they put us in touch with the Massachusetts Housing Partnership and we were lucky enough to be paired with Manisha Buttra from the Community Outreach. And she's a planner, actually, as well, and she'll be helping us to plan our work over the next few months.
Didn't she just hit the UOL?
She was. Very good, yes. And so she was put on the Urban Land Institute's Technical Assistance Panel and that should really be a helpful intersection there. We've hosted two-
Fellow select board member in Melrose.
Yes, thank you.
A colleague.
Yes.
Newly elected, I believe, yeah.
Yes, yes. But I think that adds another dimension that will be very helpful.
Absolutely. She has sat in your seat, is sitting in your seat.
Right.
Different town.
And then we've hosted two guests, Nate Robinson, who actually is from the city of Quincy, but he deals with the home program there. And he came and he talked to us about, you know, how we might be able to leverage it and so that was very helpful. And then Jack, John Dolly from Northland Development. Because part of what we need to do is try to shape projects. So talking to developers and trying to create good partnerships for the town is, is part of what we're trying to do. Tom's started looking into doing an informational campaign to spotlight Milton success stories. And I think he's really well-poised because of his professional experience. Could you just say a little bit about what you do?
Well, one of the things, oh, so in my day job, I'm executive director of the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Alliance, which is a nonprofit based in Dorchester that works with low and moderate-income first-time homebuyers. So my area of expertise is homeownership and helping first-time homebuyers, first-generation homebuyers achieve homeownership opportunities. We don't build housing, but we educate first-time homebuyers. And we also work with banks to provide discounted interest rate mortgage financing. Some of the best mortgage, or the best mortgage product in the state is a result of a partnership between our organization, now 45 banks in Massachusetts, and the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. So we've had a lot of experience working with MHP, Mass Housing Partnership, to do some promotional sort of campaigns to highlight the success stories of first-time homebuyers who have had accessing this financing, accessing their first home. And we have some relatively recent success stories in Milton, so we, what we'd like to do is, is work with those owners and work with the developer, Northland, and see if we can elevate one or two of those stories. Just so people know that we, we certainly don't have enough of these opportunities, obviously, but we have sold four recent units at, in the low 200s. These are first, four first-time homebuyer opportunities that wouldn't have been possible without the actions of the planning board and Board of Selectmen of requiring 10% of the units to be affordable. So we should celebrate that and we should spread that news throughout town and let people know that these first-time homebuyers have had a good experience being able to buy their first home in Milton. So that's, that's the idea behind the campaign. I think you're, the, campaign's too strong a word, but the effort to try to publicize some of the success stories and hopefully, people will see their son or daughter or cousin or coworker or whatever in these stories and it can help- and it can help put a face to what we're trying to achieve.
So I won't take any more of your time. There is just a little list of some housing, well, housing-related, there are a lot of other people out there. But there are other interesting housing-related events and some news, and anybody who wants to call Governor Baker and say, please make sure you keep on your housing choice bill, please do so. It's very important.
So I will say this to you, the three of us were there on Saturday morning at the MMA, Mayor Walsh was the first presenter. And as he almost always does, and I think the last three or four speeches I've listened to him give, talks about the critical situation with affordable housing. And as I sat there, I thought about it, and I asked Michael, as he knows, first, you don't know, first thing I said to Michael on Monday when he came home is, we need to have Mayor Walsh come and speak in our community. Because sometimes it's easy to be parochial and just thinking your own backyard, and sometimes when you hear it on a broader base, and I'm preaching to the choir to you people, but last night Chronicle featured Lower Mills. Did anyone see that on Chronicle last night? Featured housing in Lower Mills, and it compared it pricewise, same size, even though it was still steep, to the Seaport District, same-sized footprints, and it was two to one, it was like 700,000 or 2 million further. And as much as, and the mayor talks about this, as much as it's great, you know, the price of houses go days here, the struggle for affordable still exists. And just as we just heard from the Falcone's, and just very briefly, just comments I've heard, like, the hospital is very interested in this for, you know, new staffers that are coming, that could walk to work from living there. These are things that we need to think of. So I did ask Michael Monday if perhaps we could, even if it's the open town meeting this year, to just come and do 10 minutes, just to kind of, so people can realize, they're our biggest partner, they're our largest neighbor, and just, this is an effort, you're pushing a mountain here, this is not an easy effort for you and, at least for me. Anybody else that just gave comments?
It's starting to hurt our economy. I mean, if you look at numbers, I can give you data on that.
Mayor Walsh has been a strong leader in affordable housing. His motivation for supporting the Community Preservation Act in Boston, which passed with 74% of Boston voters two years ago, was affordable housing. He was supportive of all three uses, the open space, parks, playgrounds, and historic preservation, but he said the lion's share of the money is going to be devoted to affordable housing. And he endorsed that campaign early, and he really used his political muscle to make sure voters knew about that, and obviously the results speak for themselves.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I have a letter here from William O'Donnell, our Registrar of Deeds, and it's the Community Preservation Act surcharges for 2018. Milton contributed $86,600. And I went and looked it up, between 2002 and 2007, we've contributed $748,636. Wait, $748,636. That, to me, is a lot of money that we've left on the table. Customarily.
We didn't leave it on the table, it's being spent in random.
Right, exactly.
Like Quincy and Boston.
It's not sitting on our table.
Our neighbors are spending it for us.
Right, right. And that's really, I think it's a real shame.
Do you want to reopen the warrant now for Tom?
Not this one, no.
Need some planning for that.
But I think it's something to think about.
All right. Go ahead.
So just quickly, so do I read these figures right, Melinda and Tom? And thank you all for your leadership on this, I think this is great. Am I reading this right, that in order to reach the 10%, that would present somewhat of a bulwark against 40B, it would take about 500 additional units?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, all right. So.
Well, 90 would be if, yeah.
Go ahead.
Good start. So then my next question, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I will. How much money do you think you'd need in the Affordable Housing Trust in the short term in order to be a player? In order to try to, and again, I.
You're just asking the most loaded question for a lawyer, for an attorney.
Well, and you don't have to answer it if you don't want to, but I think it's important. I think it's important.
Set a start?
In the short term, in the short term, to be a player in the short term.
Tom, give me the answer.
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm going to sound like a lawyer. It depends.
Actually, first you can tell us how much is in the Affordable Housing Trust now, and then you can tell us.
I think it's.
50 or 60?
Yeah, I think it's 60. I think it's one.
It's more. I think there was 90, and there's more money going in this year.
This year.
It was 50 when I came on the board.
Okay, but it's still not, yeah, in terms of trying to develop affordable housing or be, being, as you put it, a player in negotiations around whether, I mentioned Kidder Library before, that's maybe a good example, that obviously the library trustees are looking to sell that. You know, it's probably not economical deal to pay what the library trustees might want or need for that property and also develop affordable housing without some subsidy. So it's hard to know exactly, but I think a quarter of a million dollars might get us started in some of those conversations, and on a small development like that, like the Kidder Library, or a relatively small parcel like Town Farm. Town Farm has its other, you know, other complications, obviously, historic, but those things, I think, a bigger proposal, obviously, you're going to want to bring more money to the table because that, the amount gets spread out over 50 units or 100 units or whatever, and so you have to subsidize more units, and you'll need more cash to try to enter those conversations. One just thing I would say is, when affordable housing does get built, it's built to be affordable in perpetuity. So that's, I think, something that many people in the general public don't realize, and so you're buying a long-term asset, and it's affordable to, if it's a first-time homebuyer, over 50 years, it'll probably be a family home for two or three families, because it'll get sold and resold at an affordable price, same thing with a rental. So you're buying a lot of permanent affordability, basically.
And just procedurally, if, let's say there was a project that you want to get involved in, would the money already have to be there, or could you come to this board and say, look, there's a project, we want to be involved, but we need X amount of dollars to go to, to get to the table for this?
I think my observation and interactions in my professional career, when I've seen other towns and other trusts, other CPA committees in towns that have CPA, developers, whether it's a nonprofit developer, a for-profit developer, they're proposing to build housing, and specifically affordable housing, want to know that the money is not subject to additional appropriation, additional votes of select boards or town meeting, because they understand, you know, we, it's not any secret to say that some affordable housing proposals can be controversial and often are faced with some level of opposition. And so developers have been burnt too many times, essentially of engaging in what they feel is good-faith conversation about a parcel, and then the vote is not forthcoming. And so that's why, I think, having some seed money to show the intent of the town is to get the ball rolling on some of these conversations that have been begun, and show the seriousness of the town of, like, we want things to happen, basically.
Thank you.
Good? I get it.
And I just want to acknowledge our chair, Melinda, who's been doing yeoman's work on this issue. And it's only been a few months since this got started in the summer, and been a lot of meetings, and a lot of, as you saw, a lot of different groups that have been reached out to, largely through Melinda and Tom's efforts. So I think we're off to a good start here, and one of the best things has been just having a member of the Planning Board there, a member of the Master Plan Committee, the Affordable Housing, is kind of getting all of the different parties that have a role in affordable housing all into the same room. So that's been very good. So thank you to Melinda for all of her work, leading this charge.
Well, thank you. And I really think the strength of the committee is the groups that it draws from, and then people with experience. So I've been the beneficiary of all of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Walsh. Thank you very much. Anybody else? We good? We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. It's not easy. People, I mean, this is hard. Okay, I know there's a lot of patience here. Item eight, we're going to have a conference with the Audit Committee, Audit Committee Chair Kathleen White, Richard Sullivan, Partner Powers &amp; Sullivan. Pete, come and join you, come and join us.
Actually, Craig Peacock is.
I'm sorry, Craig.
Yeah, good evening. I'm here, I'd like to acknowledge all the other very diligent members of our Audit Committee who are here with us. Carolyn Ferguson, who just had to leave, Ryan Burns, Michael Sutkin, and Chris Trachas, we're all.
Do you want to bring them up with you or no? It's up to you, you can bring them all, they're all here, you might as well bring them with you.
They can join us if they need to, I don't know how much more squishing you can do at the table here. But as you might remember, we did do a request for proposal last year, and we did decide as, we liked the work the Powers &amp; Sullivan had done for us for many years, but that is a matter of diligence and fresh luck, we did switch up the audit partners, and so Craig is here, this year Craig Peacock, so I'll let him introduce himself and bring you all through the highlights of the financials. I know you've received them all, you've received the management letter, and there are a couple other additional audit reports in there. We met with Craig in December, he brought us through the financials, we had a discussion of the management letter at that time. So I think, I'll let you go through the financials, the comments, and then to the extent there's any recommendation or discussion to come from the committee, I can chime in then at the end.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm Mr. Jim, members of the Select Board, thank you very much for having me. Again, my name is Craig Peacock. I am the new partner on the Town of Milton's audit with the firm of Powers &amp; Sullivan. So we're here to discuss the fiscal 18 audit. And again, I'll just want to give a little bit of an overview of the process and some of the particulars that we ran into. Again, I was new this year, so I was also not only learning the finances of the Town of Milton, but also how your Audit Committee works, how the various department head work. And, you know, to start, I'd first like to say thank you to, from your Town Administrator on down to the various department heads that we worked with. We received a very thorough package, and it was evident that people are, have the best interest of the town at hand in the work and the information that was provided to us, timely and quite responsive in most cases. And lastly, I'd also like to say, in meeting with the Audit Committee, these days Audit Committees are becoming quite prevalent. We have many, many clients that have Audit Committees. Some are more diligent than others in reviewing and asking questions. I would have to commend your Audit Committee, they clearly have the town's, you know, at heart, the bets, they have asked many questions, we've met, they've gone through the reports quite thoroughly, and asked, you know, numerous questions to make sure that everybody was on the same page. So I feel that they did a great job vetting the reports, asking questions to make sure that they understood what was in the reports as well. So again, the reports are made up of three reports, is the financial statements, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, and the management letter. As, similar to prior years, we started our audit in late April, early May, which is sort of our preliminary phase. At that time, obviously fiscal year isn't even over, but we're working with the retirement system, the school on the federal grants and that type of thing. And then we're able to come out in mid to late August, which is, based on my history, I went back about six years of looking at both the town's numbers and the timing of the audit. That is definitely a thumbs up to your accounting department, realistically, the whole financial team. But in order for your accounting department to have the books closed of, you know, 100-plus million-dollar general fund budget, let alone the enterprise funds and such, in less than 60 days, we don't have very many clients with that size of a budget that can do that. Most clients that we're at in August are, you know, much smaller than the Town of Milton, so that was great. So what I'd like to do is maybe highlight some of the differences in the report this year, and quickly go through the schedule of spending federal awards, maybe the management letter, if there's ever any questions at the end, more than happy to entertain those questions. For the financial statements this year, the largest change was the implementation of GASB-75. We've probably, everybody's been talking about OPEB, other post-deployment benefits for a number of years now, the liability has always been there. Over the last couple of years, with the implementation of both GASB-74, because the town has an OPEB trust, and now in fiscal 18, GASB-75, what it did was, is bring the full unfunded OPEB liability onto the town's full accrual statements, which this year was a little over $131 million. So that liability hit your statements this year. And GASB-75 is not going away. It'll, so it's, if you can remember, maybe two, three years ago, on the pension side, there was GASB-67 and 68 that brought on the unfunded, the net pension liability, very similar now to 74, 75, just on the OPEB side. The town, as I mentioned, does have an OPEB trust, put another $150,000 into it in fiscal 18, just under $1 million. Yes, if you compare the million to 131, we're just getting started. However, what we're seeing is something that also helps to maintain the town's AAA rating and such, we quite often meet and speak with standing poorers, moody's, what are they looking at when they're doing the ratings? What type of attributes are coming into play and such? Now that 68 and 75, the two large liabilities are on the full accrual statements, how will that start impacting bond ratings? And quite frankly, the answers that we've received to this point in time is, well, the liability's always existed, so just the fact that they're now being quantified isn't necessarily going to impact your rating, it's more so, what is the community doing about it? Are we funding, so on pension, you're able to go out to 2040, the town has not gone out to 2040. Currently, we'll see that the liability on the GASB-68 went down $15 million from 31 to about 16.3 in fiscal 18, mainly due, and we've seen that across the border with our clients this year, mainly due to a really good investment cycle. So they, you know, they earned approximately, if I'm correctly, about $22 million or so in the net of cost, had about $19 million drop to the bottom line in the pension plan, which the actuary factors in, and hence your liability went down in that case. I mentioned you're starting to fund the OPEB liability, and so what the rating agencies are looking at is, is the Town of Milton addressing these liabilities? Are they starting to put something aside? Do they have a plan, albeit maybe not a plan to fully fund, because really not many communities do at this point, but they're now comparing Milton with your peers, your local peer groups and such. If Milton was the only community in the area not doing anything related to OPEB, starting to put any money aside, there may be some talks about that, it may impact your bond rating. However, what we're being told is, as long as management is addressing the issue and starting a process to fund the liability and such, that that's a positive. And currently, that's what they're, that's what they're looking at. Quick overview, you know, again, we come in and we go right down the balance sheet. So we meet with all of your financial departments, we get, you know, we, cash and investments is about, between the pension and the town, is about $183 million worth of cash and investments. Capital assets, about $182 million this year. You know, we just spoke of the two largest liabilities, the other post-employment and the net pension liability, we look at those. One thing I'd like to just add, with those two liabilities, they're. You know, we just spoke of the two largest liabilities, the other post-employment and the net pension liability. We look at those. One thing I'd like to just add, with those two liabilities, they're derived from a third-party actuary based on information provided from the town. So what we have to also do, because we're now quantifying it onto the financial statements, is we have to meet with HR, the Director of the Retirement System, and we have to do testing of what we call the census data that's provided to the actuary to assure that, you know, on the pension side, that Craig is listed as, you know, married or single, my start date is correct. You know, am I married or single? The various attributes that, one, go into your pension, and then there's some different attributes that go into the, you know, your OPEBs later on. So we have to look at all those and I'm happy to say that we didn't find any issues with that information this year. We also go through the revenue cycle, the expenditure cycle, journal entries that were posted, and procurement. And throughout those various cycles, we'll pull, you know, anywhere from 20 to 40 different transactions and drill down, look for the supporting documentation. Everything this year was provided both timely and accurately. We did not have any issues in that respect. The town issued between your governmental and your enterprise funds, just about $6.5 million in long-term debt. So the combined total is about $41 million, just under $41 million at year-end. There was about $9.9 million of capital assets capitalized this year, as well as there was some money taken from the capital stabilization fund. So what that shows is that the town has committed not only in bonding, but putting money aside in a capital stabilization fund to assure and maintain your infrastructure, your fixed assets, your roads, your equipment for the DPW, that type of thing, which is not always the case. A couple of items on the general fund. The general fund's budget this year was essentially the town, town meeting voted to utilize approximately $2.4 million worth of available funds and/or overlay to balance the budget. Because of strong collections and the ability to control our costs, revenues, appropriations exceeded revenues by $94,000. So where we voted 2.4 to balance, we only utilized $94,000 of available funds to balance this year's budget. So that, that's a very positive. And when you look at the reasons why, revenue collections came in about $1.9 million higher than anticipated, as well as appropriations came in a little bit lower than anticipated. And part of appropriations is also encumbrances and continuing appropriations that carry over to next year. That number's been very consistent, when I went back about six years, in the $600,000 to $700,000 range. So that's been very consistent in that respect. The town's unassigned fund balance, when I look at that over the last six years, has always been consistently mid-sevens to 11% of appropriations, which absolutely helps the town to maintain their AAA rating. When you look at total general fund fund balance, it's been anywhere from 10% to 15% of appropriations. Now, what the difference is between total and, excuse me, unassigned is essentially amounts, encumbrances, articles, amounts that were, you know, appropriated for the following fiscal year. This year, the town put money into their general stabilization fund, that's up to $4.4 million. As I mentioned, we utilized some of the funds in the capital stabilization fund this year, but there was also a roadway stabilization fund that was opened, created in fiscal 18 with seed money of $100,000. So we're, you know, again, roadway to me means that that will be used for some sort of an infrastructure or roadway project in the future. And again, that just goes to the town's commitment to maintaining your asset base, your infrastructure, roadways, that type of thing. And currently, your debt service is just under 4% of budget, which is very healthy. We did issue about $70 million this year and there's some authorized and then issued some projects coming up. So we may see that number, you know, trend upwards a little bit. For our client base, we generally see it anywhere from around 4% for a low, up to about 8% for a high. Once you start getting higher than that, you know, it's taking up a good chunky of budget and, you know, we probably should be looking into some alternatives there. Enterprise funds. Both water and sewer enterprise, water posted a small loss this year of a couple hundred thousand. Main reason being, and you know, what I've seen in many of my clients this year, is the water usage and then conversely, the sewer usage, because they're tied together, has gone down. And I met with some water commissioners in a couple of other communities to understand it and I thought it was, I guess I didn't realize it was such a dry. They showed me some graphs of the months and it was a relatively dry season, wet season, excuse me. So the usage was down. And then also because they've been capitalizing assets over the years, depreciation expense increases a little bit in there. So that also helped to reduce the net income, if you will, of those two funds. In fiscal 17, there was a stormwater enterprise fund created, which this year had an income of $140,000. In fiscal 17 was $125,000. So essentially, it's doing what it's supposed to do. The rate structure should be an enterprise fund designed to cover operational costs, capital outlay, anything needed for that fund. And realistically, in the three enterprise funds that the town has, we're not, there's no subsidies coming in. The rates are essentially doing what they're supposed to do. They're designed to have the enterprise fund run as a business of its own without subsidies from the town's general fund, which is what's occurring. We mentioned the pension. The other thing, I'm not sure if I said, with the decrease in the pension liability due to rate investment earnings, the town is now 89.2% funded in their pension for fiscal calendar 17, excuse me, which is up from 78.5% in calendar 16. So we don't have a lot of clients currently that are at 89% funding in your pension. So that's, that also goes, you know, back to the financial policies that the town has had for years. In a nutshell, I guess what I'd like to end with on the financials is the town also received an unmodified opinion, which is the best that you can get. It is what you want. Again, through our conversations with both department heads and such, our questions were answered timely. Information, for the most part, was provided timely. The reason I like to say that is because in some cases, you might go to a client, ask a particular question, and if it's three or four days before they get back to you for an answer, from an auditor standpoint, they're scurrying at night to figure that out and get the answer and do the work. When we're able to be provided with support, answer to our questions in a timely manner, it shows that your department heads and their staff are involved in their day-to-day responsibilities. They know what's going on and they're, again, I feel have the town's best interest at hand. And as we move on to the management letter and all the reported federal awards, what you'll also notice is the town does not have any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or reportable conditions. So it's essentially clean reports.
Ready for cross over there?
I can move on to the scheduled federal awards unless anybody had any specific specifics on the financials?
Anybody? I'm good.
Okay. The schedule of, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just a couple.
I saw it. I asked him. He's swinging it. I'm like, you getting ready for cross-examination over there? You've got two minutes.
Yeah, I'll do it in fast and net. On the net pension liability, you said that the reduction of $15 million or $16 million was based on the investment cycle. Is that, is that at risk of going back up in a bad investment cycle?
Yes, it is. And a really quick answer is that's why the actuaries tend to look at a, you know, we'll call it a 30-year horizon and some, and when they work with the retirement board or the pension committee, OPEB committee type of thing, often, we've been seeing the rates tick down from where people have been at about an 8%, more down to closer to maybe high sixes to low sevens. But again, what they're doing is you may have a year where you only earn 3% or whatever, but on the 30-year horizon, as the actuaries generally look at, they're generally averaging the 7% to 8%.
Go ahead, Noel, go ahead.
On the custodial credit risks, on the deposits and the investments, were those amounts that were at risk uninsured, uncollateralized, were those amounts concerning at all or?
No. And the reason being is it's very consistent amongst our client base. And what happens is, so we, there's $250,000 for FDIC insurance, different investment accounts, there's DIF, SIF, there's a lot of different types. You could collateralize accounts. You generally, you know, lose some of your interests that way. What we try to make sure with our clients is that treasurers are both looking at the Veribank ratings for the type of institutions that the community is doing business with and also the, you know, just the history of that, of the bank and such. And we didn't see any, you know, lack of a better way to say it, mom and pop type financial institutions that the Town of Milton was dealing with.
And then one thing I noted, you noted that the town is self-insured for health insurance. And I wasn't sure if that, these are as of 12/31/17. I don't know if that's changed or we're still self-insured for health insurance?
Yeah.
Is that, okay.
Your mind is, you're self-insured.
All right. So, all right. Fair enough. And then finally on that, the broad question, what if anything do we need to do differently in order to maintain the AAA bond rating?
Well, to be honest with you, based on, so as a firm, we're lucky enough to have approximately 16 of the 31 or so AAA entities, they're not all cities and towns, but entities within the state of Massachusetts. And what we like to do is we come up with, you know, we're auditors, so spreadsheets are our thing, and we'll come up with different spreadsheets and we look at the level of your, I mentioned your total fund balance has been 10% to 14% of budget. We look at the various attributes and when we meet with S&amp;P and Moody's and such as to what they're looking at and what's important to them. And then we look across our client base at the various AAAs and we contrast and compare what, you know, what is each of these doing differently than our other clients in order to maintain and achieve that AAA? I think the fact that the town is continually working to put money away in their, in your stabilization funds. Again, the rating agencies know that at some point you're going to put, go into your pocket and utilize it, but what they're more concerned with is management's plan to replenish. Does management have a plan to both grow, utilize, and replenish these funds? And as long as the answer is yes and they can understand that, that it's not a negative to them that you've utilized the funds. Again, you've been maintaining a great percentage of appropriations in your general fund. I don't think we have a AAA that is less than 5%. You guys, I've never, going back six years, you've never been less than 7%. On a financial aspect, quite frankly, you're right in line with all of our other AAAs. I feel that you're, you're really doing what you should be doing.
So keep doing what we're doing.
Keep doing what you're doing. Absolutely. Absolutely.
You're frowning.
No, no. That's a good answer.
You're frowning.
That's a good answer.
I have one question, well, before we go on to the management letter. So I appreciate all the positive comments about the accounting staff and the management team. Is there anything, any negative aspect to the experience at all that we should be aware of? Anything that needs improvement?
That sounds like a million-dollar question.
You know, I have to be honest with you. Every community ends up with a management letter, okay? So there's always some, lack of a better way to say it, anything that makes it into a management letter, as an audit firm, we feel it's important to discuss and react to in some way, shape, or form.
I know you're going to get to the management letters, but I wasn't really meaning the substance of those, but just the process or in terms of the information flow, you gave some very good comments. I'm just wondering if there's anything in the process that needs improvement or if there's anything negative that we should note just for next year?
I have to say, at this point in time, my first full year through the audit, the ability to get in and fully audit the town in mid to late August, that we have the files from your accounting office two to three weeks prior to that, that's second to none. We don't have very many clients at $100 million general fund budget plus others that can achieve that. Information flow was great, the timing, everybody made themselves available, responsive. Honestly, I thought it went very well, to be completely honest with you.
Good.
Yes.
Good? Anybody else?
Federal reports, real quick. Town spent $2.2 million worth of federal funds this year. There's a process in which we have to audit what we call a major program for the Town of Milton. The major program that usually meets the criteria is the special education cluster in which we audited that. That accounted for about 60% of the $2.2 million of federal expenditures. There were no findings or question costs in the compliance of the program and that report received an unmodified opinion, the best that you can get under your federal grant compliance. Leaves us with the management letter. The management letter has six comments in it, all of which I feel have made some progress. There are, in my opinion, they're all important enough that they've made it into management letter and we're discussing. However, clearly, in our opinion as an audit firm, none of them rose, again, to be a material weakness or significant deficiency. There are, as we like to say at times, there's more than one way to skin a cat. And so we come in, we like to look at the process and work with the community to try to assist and implement some changes. As the audit firm, we cannot make management decisions and implement policies and procedures. We can discuss and, because then we can't come in and audit essentially our own work, if you will, but we can discuss it and make recommendations, which we've done. And in, you know, again, within the six comments, there's been some level of progress made on each.
I did ask Craig to, because the Audit Committee needs to report to town meeting and sort of a rolling list to say which ones from last year that existed have been resolved. So if some of these are here are resolved and that's just the process we went through to make sure we have that rolling inventory year over year.
So fully resolved, we've considered the procurement process centralization in looking through the procurement process this year and assuring the town's following 30B and that the information was readily available and in a centralized location. We had, everything we needed was readily available and provided to us, as well as the town had hired a chief procurement officer in 17, which, you know, now has some time and has made some definite progress there. Although the student activity audit was not completed as of June and/or the date of our report, we have contracted with the school and that audit will be taking place in early February for the student activity accounts, so that will be closed down. The record retention in the retirement office, a new person was hired there last year, which understood the issue of the lack of documentation. Some of the files has made some changes on a go-forward basis. Every file that we checked on a go-forward basis had all necessary documentation and they'll be working to try to backfill where necessary on some of those. There was also one, we spoke of the federal report. There was also one, we spoke of the federal report, it used to be guided under A133. What the federal government did was collapse a whole lot of these different circulars into what we refer to as the Uniform Guidance. And although the town of Milton has always had federal funds, the federal funds are expended through the same channels as any other departmental dollar is spent, goes through the warrant process, you know, it's approved, that type of thing. What Uniform Guidance now wants is those processes of handling federal funds written, physically documented. What we've done as an audit firm is by looking at a lot of our clients and what they've come up with, they've sort of been all over the board, some meet, there's quite a few criteria you have to meet to really be in compliance. So what we've done as an audit firm is come up with what we'll call a boilerplate that a community can kind of fill in and tweak a little bit to your policies, and I provided that actually today to your accounting office, so they can utilize that to go ahead and, you know, develop a policy for the town of Milton, which should help to clear that one. And, you know, within cash, there's been a cash comment out there for a number of years, and what we're going to do is either maybe potentially do a little project with the treasurer's office, or when we come back in the spring, we're going to sit and meet with the treasurer's office. And what I'd like to say is, yes, from an auditing standpoint, one and one is always two, we're looking for black and white answers, tight support to all information and reconciling items, that type of thing. I would say that there are some amounts that we weren't able to, from an audit standpoint, nail down to the penny. However, I also would like to suggest that I think it's going to be more procedural and we're, you know, we're going to work with the treasurer to nip this, so hopefully this comment can go away this year. And I also would suggest that the dollar value of the various adjustments when aggregated are not extremely material to the town. So yes, we feel there are some hiccups going on in the cash reconciliation process, and then maybe how it gets over and reconciled with the town accountant's office. What we're going to do as a firm is work with treasury this year and see if we can't assist nipping that one and help figuring out maybe where the breakdown is occurring and assure that we can support every reconciling item on every account.
So this is one, I think, from an audit committee perspective, we, after our meeting in December, I, you know, inquired for, of Amy Dexter, the town accountant, and I know she talked to Mike, you know, is the room in the budget, could we get some outside services support to bring this item to rest, because it's kind of lingered for a few years. And, you know, our inventory of management letter comments has come down, but this one is kind of lingered. So let's put the right resources and attention to it and get a process in place and get it fixed. And so that was our thought with bringing in the auditing firm.
So the Audit Committee will be overseeing that process or just checking in?
Well, we will certainly check in. I think it's, you know, a prudent step for the town to take, so.
Very happy about this, because I was going to ask, how long are we going to let this particular item go on? So I'm thrilled. Thank you.
I think it's just, it's probably an easy fix to get to resolution, and I know the treasurer had some good ideas, oh, it's probably this or this or this, well, it's, you know.
Good places to start.
We want to get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a few years that this one has been on, the prior year statement, so it would be nice to get this one off. Seems to be the most serious one of all of the six, too, so.
The Audit Committee will work with the treasurer on this, is that, is that the idea?
Well, the outside accountants will.
Powers of someone comes out of the Audit Committee, right.
Yeah, no, I understand, but.
We'll report back to the Audit Committee and, you know, as well as when we get to next year's report, you know, when we meet, we'll have discussions on what occurred. But this will occur long before the final phase of the audit, so we'll be able to report to the Audit Committee late spring at the latest, depending on, you know, how the town decides to go forward with the project.
Okay.
That's it? I think that, I mean, any other comments?
No, no, I'm more than happy to entertain any questions on any other reports, but that is.
You've done.
An overview.
Anyone?
Just thank you for your leadership on keeping us on track and helping us with our internal controls. It was interesting to hear that there aren't many towns with Audit Committees, so I think we're very fortunate.
I think we should get an update as well. I think, in fact, I think last year, we specifically said we wanted to make sure that that was a priority for the management team. So I think we need an update on how that process is working out. I think that's our duty to the residents.
If we do this, how about if the update goes to the Financial Committee, Subcommittee? Then you can get back to us, it's your.
Yeah, I mean, it could start here, it's going to come to the full board eventually, yeah.
So I guess, I guess that was my question, where is that update going to come from? Is it going to come from Audit Committee, auditors, treasurer, who's the, I used to work with someone who said, you know, you need one throat to choke, so who's the throat to choke?
I think if we could ask the town administrator to, you know, oversee it with the Audit, or at least be in touch with the Audit, the outside auditors to make sure that.
I think you've been doing that anyway.
Yeah, it'll be a work in progress, this is, this is a new step.
And by all means, when it comes time to an update, you can work with town administrator, Audit Committee, Treasurer, and if you would like us present, I would be more than happy to attend. Please just say the word.
Thank you all, thank you, committee. Thank you, Jim. Thank you all very much.
Pleasure to meet you all. Thank you very much.
I have a motion here before, do I have a motion? No, I don't have a motion, all right, so we're good. Thank you all. Thank you for your patience.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Brian. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We'll move on to item nine, which is the conference approval of the capital improvement committee, planning committee's recommendations, and I'm going to ask our town accountant, Amy Dexter, who's the co-chair, and I see a flying soul.
Excuse me?
I see Mr. Hurley's not here, so.
I'll make this one quick.
Oh, no, you can, it's all yours.
So the capital improvement planning committee voted on January 16th that they're meeting a recommendation for this ward's consideration and approval, as well as the warrant committee's consideration and approval. In a nutshell, we took the approach that we were not going to make a recommendation for any equipment or technology needs this year, that we were going to focus on things that potentially could be a public safety item or infrastructure repairs, improvements that were needed. So when you look at this recommendation, it's significantly less than what it has been over the last three to five years. But the recommendation would be a total of bonded capital items of $810,601. This mainly relates to some roadway, not roadways, well, some roofing and rooftop unit upgrades at the schools, some paving and concrete and curbing at the schools, as well as some sidewalk and paving at townwide through the DPW, and some traffic signal equipment. Most of this equipment has a useful life that the capital committee is recommending of 10 to 15 years. In addition, CIPC is recommending a total of non-bonded capital items of $1,132,551,000, of which, I have to go to the next page, of which $592,051 is recommended to be funded using the bond premium on the August 2018 issue. So that would be contingent upon the article in the February town meeting that would allow us to do that, being approved by town meeting. And then $30,000 from free cash, and the balance, no, right, $540,500 in free cash, where the $30,000, I was talking, of this $1,132,551, $622,051 is roadways. The $30,000 of that would be from free cash, and then the balance of the $592,051 would be from the bond premium, then the rest of the items on this list would be from free cash.
As well as the demolition funds, I thought.
Pardon?
As well as the demolition funds, I thought.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry. Plus $150,000 from the remaining balance in the demo funds that we transferred to capital projects for the Central Ave Hendry's demolition.
If I might add, having been a part of this process for three years, more hands-on, the last two years, went to a number of the meetings, the discussion is very vibrant. The crew on the CIPC is well-renowned, touches all aspects of government, and I think the concentration on must-haves this year and taking care of some items like roofs at the schools, all the work that Bill Ritchie and his team does, or even the contracted work, where if you spend a couple of hundred thousand dollars now, it'll save you from a couple of million dollars in the future with these roofs. Again, the concentration on sidewalk and permanent patching and the roadway money is consistent with what we used to fight for in Boston dollars. But it's, I think this is a very prudent plan. It touches most, if not all, departments in town government. Obviously, the radio replacement of the police department, that's phase three of it. But, yeah, I think the CIPC did a very good job throughout this process to identify the most needed projects. What was the total ask for the year?
For the five-year period, it was $87 million, and for the fiscal '20, it was $10.4 million. One thing I'd like to note in the non-bonded items is the $150,000 for the town-wide traffic model bicycle master plan that was requested from the master plan implementation committee. It's a question of if that's really capital or not, the demo proceeds were identified as being the source of funding for that. I thought that made sense, and it ended up in the capital committee's request, I think, because of the dollar value of it, and really that gray line of where does the request come, through the operating budget or through the capital? So we did address it here.
Amy, can I ask, on the roofs, the school roofs, Tucker and then the district-wide roofs, does any of that relate to the original building issues, or are those, have those all been resolved? Because there were some residual problems with the roofs from the building project many years ago that I know we were trying to resolve for several years, and I don't know if this is the final phase of that, or if this is just new.
To be honest with you, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to ask Bill.
I think, no. Listening to Bill, and one of the things that we, Bill says all the time, he goes, he breaks down the years that the schools have, and Tuck is at 10. I mean, he talks about how it's, he actually, we tried to, we talked about trying to do two roofs this year, but he couldn't personally manage, he just couldn't manage two at a time, so he had to kind of split it up.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we were just dealing, a few years back, we were dealing with some residual, I'm sure you remember, Richard, residual problems. And then, Amy, so is the total from free cash 30 plus the $360,500? Putting aside the $150,000 from the demolition fund, is the total from free cash, is that, am I reading that right? You got the 30K for, and then $360,500 for the?
So free cash is $390,500.
Right.
The other financing sources, which would be from the demo, is $150,000, and then the bond premium is $592,051.
Got it. Thanks.
And then, just one other thing that, to note, that the capital committee thought was a good idea to change, is if you know in the non-bonded capital items and the facilities and the school, the facility dash schools, we weren't as specific as we were in the past, because what happens is an emergency or something might come up where his director's priorities might change, and in the past, where we've been so specific in the article, it really kind of limits what he can do. So an example of that would be if one, if he goes to do a project that was voted at 50,000 and it only costs 40, and another one is going to cost 40 that was only budgeted at 30, is no flexibility to use those funds, and it kind of hangs out there until it can go to a future town meeting. So the plan is to keep it more general, and the text of the article and in the comments kind of detail what the planned projects are, noting that the priorities could shift depending upon if additional information comes forward, and that's at the judgment of the consolidated facilities director.
So that's where you're talking about, something like school facility improvements slash upgrades?
Yes, yes. And we wouldn't be as general when it's bonded, because the bonding agencies would need more specific information, but if you're using free cash or some other forces, sources of funds, I think. And then one last thing I want to mention is, I also included in this recommendation the useful life, because what happens is Mass General Laws has a recommended useful life, and you may plan to bond longer than that useful life, but it has to go in front of the select board, and then a vote must be taken to extend that useful life. So in order to avoid any confusion, I felt it was a good idea to put the useful life in the body of the article, so when the article goes to the financial advisor, it's in there, and there's no question whatsoever what the intent is. So for example, if there's a piece of equipment that Mass General Laws says has a useful life of five years, for instance, a fire truck, well, in reality, a fire truck lasts 10, 15 years. So to bond a fire truck over five years is not how the capital improvement planning committee plans. So we would plan that for 10 or 15 years, so we would ask this board to take a vote at a future meeting. In the event that these recommendations are approved, I think we could then go forward with a vote at a future meeting to approve the useful life, so that it, two years from now, when we go to bond, it's already done. So that's why I included it here, and I would suggest we include that in the body of the article.
I agree. Potholes avoided.
Yes.
Big potholes.
Yes.
Anyone else, any other questions? I just want to thank, I mean, this is my first year on capital, but I've been before capital on many occasions, but I just, I do want to say, and Katie will remember this, going back to the winter of 2016 or 2015, when we got the 100-plus inches and virtually crippled this town, and I can remember being at the DPW yard, and at the time, most of our DPW infrastructure, our equipment, was way beyond useful life. And I was there Saturday, and thanks to the work of your committee, both from town funds and from an infusion of private funds, we're in a much better position today. I just, it was just, you look at the equipment that we're using today, and everything, sanding, salting, plowing, side, I mean, and this was a tough storm, Chase was right, he would be, I think he said to me, we'd rather get 12 inches of snow than what we got hit with, the snow, the rain, the freezing, but we're in a much better position today than we were. And I think Chief Grant, whose mind, he could say the same, when there wasn't a plan for replacing a new piece of equipment every five years, and it was coming bag, borrow, and steal to get a new engine, and the lifespan of those apparatus going way beyond 15 years and more was, so to everyone there, I'm very honored to be there, but very grateful for all of your work.
And then one last thing, just so that you're not surprised when you see me here again in a couple of weeks. One last order of business on the capital committee is a jet. One last order of business on the Capitol Committee is agenda is we need to look at the requests for the enterprise funds. That's usually much easier than the juggling the general fund. As well as in the event that there's any new developments related to the fire station project, we're also going to reevaluate some of the use of free cash in that recommendation. But right now, we don't have additional information. So this is where we are. I mean, these are the projects anyways. It might just shift the funding of where things came from.
Anybody else? Anyone else? Who's that? That's not me. Is that you?
No, that's not me. Is that you? If it is, somebody put me on a diet. I don't know.
So we have a motion? That was great. So I guess, does someone have a question? So we have a motion before us to, did someone make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Capital Improvement Committee?
I move that we approve the recommendations of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee in the amount of one million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars, as set forth in its January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen memo.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience too. I broke it, yeah. I'm going to the paper. I don't know what I did. Okay, item nine, and then item nine, item ten, the discussion approved by Historical Commission. Well, Fred was the lockup Milton Yocup building and asked the chair of our Historical Commission, Steve O'Donnell, come join us. Are you coming, come as well? Come on up, come up. Sitting here all this time.
Thank you. Steve O'Donnell, Chair of the Historical Commission, Meredith Hall, member. Bill?
Mollin, ready.
Also a member.
Come up, grab a seat, come on up.
Did that whole package finally come through today? No. I wonder if it's the attachments that are slowing it down.
Okay, the four is yours.
I'm sorry?
Four is yours.
I'm sorry?
They do have a copy of the letter.
I do have a copy of your letter.
Yeah, it's a very simple, really a very simple cover letter outlining the reasons for requesting an evaluation. What you don't have in front of you, because for some reason I was unable to send it to you, are the ten photographs and the historical documentation that will need to go with this letter. I sent it three times, yesterday and today. I don't know if it's the attachments that are messing it up, but your office isn't getting them. So I will have to get you hard copies. I did hear back from them today, they do want the submitted hard copy, not electronically. So the pictures will have to be reprinted and so on. We don't know if it's going to qualify or not. The more we looked at it, I was there on Saturday with the photographer, the more we looked at it, the more she thought, yeah, you know, there's enough of the original here. The outside of the building is all original. You can see the jail cells, they still have bars. What we were told is the little L addition on the back was the drunk tank and that has three narrow vertical slits for light. You can see the ghosting on the inside of those jail cell windows on the beadboard. Now, we didn't try to take the beadboard off, we didn't push any ceiling tiles up, but we believe that that documentation is there on the inside as well. It is, of course, known as the lockup, but it lived as a lockup for a very small part of its life. It's been the art club for over a hundred years. And that in and of itself lends credence to the history of the building because it's had that steady use all that time. So we don't know if it's going to, how the evaluation will come out, but we have to start with it. You may want to add a sentence or two in there about why you're particularly interested in the building now. Certainly, it could be a feature of the rejuvenated waterfront area, regardless of what use the building has going down the line. That's our suggestion for a letter. It's up to you whether you like it, modify it.
So I thought of that, I was just, when we made our motion, I was going to ask my colleagues that, if you wanted to add an additional comment that we, on our approval, that we approve it pending any comments or edits. We do that pretty regularly here now, so it's, I think that's probably, we could probably do that if someone wants to do that.
Actually, what I, I do have one copy of the Mass Cultural Resource Information System, which is the historical documentation. So I can leave that with you. I don't have printouts of the photographs.
That's okay.
But I will get those for you. So you can put it all together.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Steve, we're asking really just that they, that the Mass Historical Commission come out and evaluate this building to see if it would meet the National Register's requirements?
Yes.
Do they do like a technical review?
They'll do a very general review. The real review comes from the National Register Group. But it has to go through the State Historical Commission first and see if it meets the criteria. We think it does, but it's Mass Historical that makes the decision.
Do you know what the process is? Will I get my take?
I don't. I think the Mass, I think Mass Historical meets once a month, I think. So perhaps, depending on when they meet in the month, thirty to sixty days. If they approve it, the National Register listing could take up to a year. And that's another whole application process that we would probably have to hire a consultant to prepare. If you've seen the ones from the Wakefield Estate and from Eustis Estate, you know, they're like, well, those are big estates, but they're a half inch thick. There's a lot of documentation. But the longest journey begins with a single step.
Well, I'll give you a couple of historicals. So my dad joined the Milton Police Department in nineteen forty-nine. He grew up, I should explain this to Michael, where Shaws is, on River Street is, where my dad and all his brothers and his one sister grew up. Four of them served in World War II at the same time. I never knew anyone, I don't know if he did either, that ever worked in this building. But if you have not read Pride in Blue, which is a magazine that was written about the Milton Police Department in nineteen ninety when we turned a hundred, it's broken into chapters. And I believe chapter one and chapter two talk about the timeframe when this was, I believe we got this from Boston Edison, was, it was a gift from Boston Edison to the town. Am I right or wrong?
Not this building. No, the Central Avenue building.
The Central Avenue one, okay, the Central Avenue, yeah. I don't remember how we got this one, but this.
Well, this was built for the Milton lockup. Up until this time, Milton shared a lockup with Boston.
Yes, we were part of Dodgers.
Which was part of the Baker, became part of the Baker complex. And this, of course, predated the organized police department. It was all volunteers when this was built. So the building actually preceded the organized police.
There's stuff from that building in the museum at the police station, uniforms, equipment that were from that time period.
Interesting.
But I don't know anyone in my life that, and even, my dad began, when I was a kid, he worked on Central Avenue. And.
Well, again, it was only used till nineteen oh six.
I know, I know. It was very short.
Yeah, very short.
But I think it's worth the effort.
Oh, I think so, definitely. I definitely think it is. And while I have your attention for a couple of minutes, has there been any progress on repairs to the building following the inspector's report beginning of January?
I saw that today, yes.
Yeah, well, Bill Ritchie walked the site.
Yep.
There's an estimate here for roofwork to be done.
Okay.
Connor, Donna, Copper and Slate went out there with Bill Ritchie, wrote up a report on January twenty-first.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Because that was the first thing, tighten, get the building tightened up, the roof, the windows, there's a plumbing leak inside, there's a couple of electrical things that, although the inspector says none of them is more important than the roof, but there are some small things that ought to be taken care of just to prevent further damage.
Right.
And I will just share with you, Ellen Anzalone got tied up at work tonight, couldn't come. She isn't one of our architects. Principal in Fine Gold, Alexander, she asked me to inform you of her opinion. Overall, we need a master plan to approach the stabilization and restoration of the building. Next steps are as follows. Engage a structural engineer to perform invasive investigation to determine the extent of structural issues. That would be opening up some inside walls to see how bad the brick is. Opening up the inside walls could be patched up very easily. Structural engineer would develop a master plan to prioritize stabilization, provide drawings and details for the repairs and provide a cost estimate for the work, and then hire a contractor, Mason, to perform the work in item two. So the inspector gave us a good start, but one of the feelings is the entire front wall perhaps has to be redone. Part of it's bulged. And yes, some of it can be fixed, some of the brick can be repointed and so forth. But what the fear was that through those front windows where some of the sills are totally rotted, the water's getting in there, getting in, freezing, bulging. And the question is, does the whole front need to be stabilized?
Bill Ritchie gave a great presentation on the Capitol Committee, asked me about this, just how it has to be done and to preserve the historic nature of it. Every aspect about the type of concrete, I mean, he was very good on it. He was very good.
Very good.
I will disseminate this to you.
Okay, I appreciate it, just for, you know, we hadn't heard anything, well, hadn't, you know, nobody threw a top over or anything. But as long as, you know, tighten it up, prevent further damage and then.
Work forward from there. Keep taking steps forward to get to where we want to be.
That's right.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Yeah, just, I, all right, I will, I will give you the photographs.
Okay.
All right.
So don't leave. So we have a motion before us to approve the letter written on behalf of the board by the Historical Commission Chair, Stephen O'Donnell, the national, it's actually to the Massachusetts, it is the National Register Program. Regarding the Milton Yocup building, the lockup, and the only thing I would add to it is pending any comments by any of the members of the board here. Is that all right?
You're right, it is to the Massachusetts Historical Commission, yeah.
Am I right, it is to the Massachusetts Historical Commission, correct? Right. So, someone want to make that motion or I'll take that as a motion? Want to second it? You want to second it?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have faith, we'll get this done. Thank you. Thank you for your patience too. It's been, it's been a long night. Chief, please come join us.
So apparently that was me. Don't ask me what I did.
Thank you. Good night. This is item eleven, a discussion approved to reopen and close the warrant for the annual town meeting in May. The motion before us is to open the warrant for the annual town meeting on May sixth, twenty nineteen. Chief, if you want to, we talked already today, but if you want to speak just a little bit to the.
Yeah, what we would look to do with this would be to reinstitute the civil service age limit back to what it was in years past. And what it is, is upon your thirty-second birthday, you are no longer eligible to take the exam and, you know, become a firefighter, if so true, chosen police officer. There's a four-year window that they reserve for military so that then you push that back to the thirty-sixth birthday. And just a little bit of history on it, like you say, at one point in time, this was the law statewide. Civil Service then abolished it statewide some years ago, and I didn't think to look it up, but it's better than ten, I know that. They reinstituted it with this format, that if a city or town wishes to get back into it, they have to take a vote at a town meeting and then submit to civil service.
And we did, we did do that. We were one of the few that did it, but we did. Chief's right.
One of the few that did what?
Did. We're not, most communities don't have this anymore. They stayed, they didn't reinstitute the thirty-two, they went above it. And, but we voted to go back to thirty-two. I think it had something to do with pension reform or something.
We actually, no, we haven't voted to go back.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what, that's what this seeks to do, is to reinstitute it. So we, at this point in time, currently do not have an age restriction at all.
Has anyone?
I did some reaching out today on that. I heard back from somewhere between twenty-five and thirty communities and it's running just about dead even at fifty percent of the towns have reinstituted.
I'm confused about those numbers. Twenty-five to thirty have reinstituted it, but?
No, I heard back from, from sending out, I reached out to all the metro communities and all the local county communities. And of those, I've heard back from twenty-five to thirty. Over the next few days, I'll hear from more. But right now, with that number having responded to me, it's sitting just, you know, within one or two, one way or the other, or fifty percent. And I don't have the exact numbers because when I tallied them up, I've heard from five or six more communities.
I talked to you today about it and I hadn't even really thought about it until we just, just some of the scenarios and the possibilities and the reason why we want to do this and it just, from a community point of view, it makes smart sense to do this.
It really does. It's one of those things where it's, all the benefit to bringing someone on at an older age goes to the employee. And there's a lot of pitfalls that the town and the department can also hit along the way. You know, any, anybody that truly, truly seeks out these jobs for, you know, a career, knows it at a young age, pursues it at a young age. And those that come on board later in life have other motivations. And, you know, quite honestly, sometimes they fit with our mission and sometimes they don't.
So, so do we think that we had the age restriction in Milton and then it went away when the state abolished it? Is that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we would have both come on with an age restriction.
Yeah, I came on with, I came on under this.
So the state abolished it and then it went away from Milton, rather than, rather than Milton taking any affirmative step to.
To keep it.
Or to go away.
Yeah, the first step when it went away, you had no, no choice in the matter. It went away statewide. They just flat out abolished it.
Got it.
And, you know, then issues arose and, you know, I don't know who prompted it, but the push was to reinstitute it. And that's the format that it came back in, that if we want to take action on that, that we have to take a vote at a town meeting and pursue it that way.
And this also covers police officers. Do we, do we know from Chief King, does he have a view on this or?
I didn't ask him for a view.
I spoke to him briefly today. He's going to look into it a little more. He's aware of it.
Yeah, I've, I've had a couple of conversations with him on it. If, if he doesn't desire this for whatever reason, or if between him and the town, because I think the town has an interest in which way we would go on this, it can be done independently.
Sure.
It, you know, I didn't, but I just think of a couple of cases where communities wound up getting either firefighter, police officer who was like fifty-five. It just.
Yeah.
And so now you're there, you can only do ten, everything from the pension, it's just the job itself, just.
It's just the job itself, right. You know, it's one thing to come in as, you know, a twenty-five-year-old and you know, you know, what you're evolving into and you adapt as your career goes along to come in and trying to do this at an advanced age like that. I actually hadn't done it before, but as I was sitting there, I did the math. Thirty-three years old is the latest age that you can come on and max your pension out. Beyond that, you're.
We talked about that today. I didn't realize that. We talked about that today.
So Chief, my sense is that, correct me if I'm wrong, there's not a sense of urgency on this? And I was talking with the town administrator earlier about it. I'm wondering why the request is to reopen the warrant for May rather than put this to October, where, you know, we've already passed the deadline. It sounds to me like this board really hasn't done the due diligence on, you've reached out to some other communities, but we don't normally get a draft of an article and vote it that night to submit it. it that night to submit it. We normally discuss something, kind of do the research and the due diligence, and then decide whether we're going to submit something to town meeting.
Quite honestly.
And I'd be more interested in seeing whether this should be submitted in October, rather than to May, if we were to go about doing it, although I would like to see the research from the other towns.
I can forward that to you. I have all that. Well, it wouldn't be research, it's, it's what they.
The responses that they have.
What they have, yeah. So, I can certainly forward that over. Quite honestly, the reason it's seeking to reopen is it was a mistake on my part. We had some discussions over the course of the summer of issues that we had seen and the possibility of doing this, and honestly, I just got lost with the dates of the February warrant and missed filing.
But is there any, I mean, I guess my question was more, is there any real reason to submit this now to May, rather than wait for October?
You're asking a question on the unknowns, though. So, let's say here's an opening, and hypothetically, because he doesn't always know who a candidate's going to be, all of a sudden, he gets a candidate who's, and I hate to talk about age, but who's 52 years old, just coming up pretty new on the list. I think, the more I think about it, and I hadn't thought about this in a long time, and the more I talked about it today, and just looking at it from an operational point of view, it, it makes sense to do it.
It, it really does, and, and I would agree with what you're saying. It's, you know, it's one of those things that you have to be very cautious as, as we go forward with someone who may be, you know, way up in age like that, that the way, the way hiring works for us is for me to bypass somebody, I've got to have a combination of one or two things. I've either got to have reason not to hire the person I'm seeking to bypass, or I've got to have substantial reason to hire the person that is behind them on the list. Generally, that doesn't exist. That would exist if somebody, say, was a firefighter in Walpole, non-civil service town, takes, takes the exam here, gets on the list, they're already a firefighter. They've got reason that I can say, hey, you know what, candidate two is better than candidate one. That's pretty rare. In fact, I, I've bypassed a number of people over the years, and I don't believe I've ever bypassed because the second was preferable. You know, it's usually something in, you know, the history of the candidate that gets bypassed, that causes the bypass. So, in this case, you know, I, I think you're, you're opening yourself up to an age discrimination suit, even if you've got pretty just cause to do the bypass. So, I think the quicker, if the desire is there, that we get this reinstated, I think the better, the better off we're going to be. I, I don't see, I don't foresee, in, in my view, this helps the town as a whole more, more so than it helps the department. It certainly helps the department, but I think if we continue with the hiring practices we have now, somewhere along the way, we're going to have a substantial problem with somebody.
So, who, because obviously, if the state overturned this 10 years ago, or 10 or more years ago.
It's better than 10.
More than 10 years ago, so clearly, somebody at the state, or some department at the state, thought it was a good idea to over, to remove the age restriction. Do we know it? Do we have any, this is what I'm saying, I, I'd like to know a little bit more about why the state removed it, what the reasons advanced for that were, and if, if half the communities that responded to you said they haven't reinstated the age limitation, what was the, do they give any reasons for why they didn't do it?
No, I haven't asked that question.
I do, so.
I think, I, I would kind of look at, at it in the opposite direction of how you looked at it, though, in that, you know, they removed it, the fact that they put it back tells you something was failing.
Yes.
You know, and there was substantial, if, if the town of Milton says, hey, this, you know, this isn't working for us, we're not going to have the juice to push that to the other way. So, there was, there was a substantial push to say, hey, something's broken here, and this needs to go back the other way.
Yeah, I guess, I don't have a position on this yet. I guess what I'm saying is, this is, we, we normally do more due diligence on articles before we submit them, and I think there's some pieces here. We haven't heard Chief King's viewpoint. We haven't, because this would, as, as the article was drafted, it does apply to police officers as well, and I, I also have a question as to, I know we, there was a civil service exam done fairly recently, because I know that it's usually done at the middle school, and we get all kinds of complaints, because the cars are parked all over the side streets.
We talked about this today, though, you'll never get them lined up. That's the whole problem. Every year, there's exams.
No, but my question is, how does it impact someone who's already, say, on the list? Because that list goes on for a few years, doesn't it?
Those lists are generally active for two years, yes.
So, and, so when was the, it was been in last year or so, all those complaints about the cars parking on the side streets. So, how, someone who's on that list, say, how does it impact that person? Would it, would it apply, or is this going to apply prospectively to the, the future exam?
I would say this, that could be done either way. As it's written, it would apply, as I read it, probably immediately.
So, I have a thought. Could we continue this just to the next meeting and reopen it then, or is it too far out to just to hear from Chief King?
I think we could, because we're already past the deadline now. So, to me, the question is, to me, the more likely scenario should be October, because we, you know, we've had this happen with the planning board and a lot of other departments, where we get, and it's really not fair to the warrant committee to be reopening, closing the warrant, adding articles all the time, but if you're going, if we're going to consider it, there's no difference in considering it, really, this meeting versus the meeting on February 6th.
Can you move that?
While we have a couple of weeks to do the due diligence and try to find out.
I just wanted to get it, I, I knew I'd missed the deadline, so I wanted to get it before you're as, as quick as possible, so you could do due diligence.
So, I, to your point, I suggest you might want to have a conversation with the chief, like I did, because as soon as we started talking, I thought to myself, this one makes sense. And at least to me, go back to what Mr. Cronin said, when I was department head, support your department heads, and to me, this is a prudent request, and so I would be, but.
I agree with that, Richard, although I do think, I do think that, you know, the warrant committee is going to ask all these questions. Town meeting is going to ask all these questions. We're the board that's being asked to submit the article. It's going to be a select board article, so we have to be able to say, we've done our due diligence, we know what the answer to these questions are, before we send this to the warrant committee. So, I think, Chief, you've given us some good information, and I would like to have a conversation with you, probably about it, but, but I think if we can get a little more information about what the other communities are doing, why the state made the initial change, and why they're now allowing the towns to go back, that should shed some light on this, so that we can hopefully answer some of these questions.
Right. I mean, the issues seem fairly obvious, but that's not data, and it would be good to know what some of the real issues are, just so that when we get to town meeting, people will ask the questions and we'll have the answers.
So, I'm going to, I'll continue this till February 6th. In the meantime, anyone wants to confirm, and you want to touch base with Chief King? Okay.
Thank you.
I know, I know, Tom, because you've already, John's already aware of this, right? This, John.
Yes, yes.
And if we could, I really think, in addition to hearing from Chief King, Katie's point about the retroactivity, that's a, that's a real, that's something we really should know. If it's going to apply to people who are on the list now, or it's just going to apply after the next exam, that's, that's, that's something we really should know.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Chief.
Have a good night.
Thanks. Okay. Item 12, a discussion approval of the May 2019 town meeting. Do we, you want to, I, do we need to do this tonight, or you want to just until 9:30?
This we don't have to do tonight, because Article 7, the seventh item?
Yeah.
Wasn't approved tonight, so you can defer that.
Okay, I'm going to defer that one, if that's all right with everyone. Article 13, discussion approval, special town meetings. I don't think we need to do this one tonight either.
They should also defer.
I'm going to do, I said this to you, I'm going to defer 13 as well, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I, I actually, the fire.
You told me that.
Fire building committee chairman asked if we could put off that, that until the next meeting, so.
So, item 14 is discussion approval request for funds for Traffic Mitigation Committee. That didn't take long to come up for cash.
Well, we, we, well, you know, we, we, we got cash before we barely formed from the MPIC, but this is a, so this arose because of the desire to have citizen input, and to have a module on the website where citizens could actually input issues right onto a map, and so to collect data that way. Mike, you can correct me if I'm presenting.
No, that's spot on.
And, and our, the initial estimate was, well, given our existing resources, we could do this for 300 and some odd dollars, which is kind of a no-brainer. Then subsequently.
$300?
350.
Yeah, 300, 300 dollars.
Katie, do you make that motion?
Well, well, now it's changed a little bit, because, because.
Of course.
Yeah, we, we've had, one of the committee members had some suggestions.
300,000.
For, for improving it. Now, the committee hasn't, hasn't weighed in on it, committee hasn't reviewed it yet, but the, the, the very helpful thoughts for improvement would raise it to about $2,000.
$2,000 even.
Yeah, so, now, the committee hasn't weighed in on it, approved it, or requested it at this point. It's, it's really just, the concept was, let's get citizen input, and, and when it was $300, it was a no-brainer, and now with, with these additional components to the module, it make it better. I mean, it make it, makes it, and, and Mike could go into the details if you want, but it makes it a, a better tool to use for citizen input. It kicks it up to $2,000. So, I, so my view was, well, now it's not, you know, it's something that should be discussed in it, and maybe it should be discussed by traffic mitigation first, before it comes here. I don't know if there's any pressing need for it, or, but.
No, I did, so the, the main impetus of it was the discussion about having three public hearings, possibly four, as a group. So, we announced that on February 28th at the Keys Room, we're going to have a, just a public information session, be up there, everyone taking notes, what do you see, what do you know, right? What's your commute like? What are your problems in town? And the precipice of this WikiMap was the complete streets model that we used, that was developed by an engineering firm, which I believe Lauren Massier said Milton received the largest input of such a WikiMap during the complete streets prioritization process that this board signed off on, and subsequently, an application was filed, and $396,000 worth of projects are coming down the pipeline this year. So, that was the idea, build in some public information sessions, give people the opportunity to interact with the town on the website, collect that information, and then try to prioritize a plan to report back to this board in December. And it, it's more robust and dynamic than the cookie cutter, $350 one, but it was a conversation between Chair Mullen, Chair Jeff Mullen, and, and the firm, that they could come up with something a little more dynamic for, for $2,000, which we, again, we haven't, we're going to discuss that tomorrow at our meeting.
Is she going to come back?
Yes.
Is she going to come back?
I think so. I think, I think it makes, I think we should probably have a recommendation from our committee on that, and, but just to highlight it for you, it'll be, it'll be, you know, whether we want to recommend $2,000 as opposed to 300.
Who are we going to take it from?
We can check my budget, yeah. But tomorrow at 7:00.
Tomorrow at 7:00, all right.
AM.
You just made his day.
I know, I forgot about that.
All right, now we got to move, he's got to go home.
I know.
Okay.
So, that's the long and short of it, and it's a developing situation. When the press release went out on Thursday, we got a lot of feedback from the community that they think this is a very good idea to trying to help solve some of the larger non-traffic commission, per se, stuff, and this interactive map is a great tool to do that. So, I think the combination of the public information sessions and the interactivity of the map will help this committee bring a nice plan to this board for a decision.
That's great.
Probably more expensive for 2,000, than $2,000, but, but the idea to mitigate some of the traffic problems in town that we know all exist.
Okay. Good? Okay. Okay. 15, approval, one-day local licenses to the Eustace Estate. This is a motion to approve the following one-day local license for the Eustace Estate Historic New England at 1424 Canton Avenue. So, want to make a motion on these, those three of them?
Sure, I'll do it.
You can just start with the dates, you can just start with the.
Okay. To approve the following one-day local, I'll move to approve the following one-day local licenses for the Eustace Estate Historic New England at 1424 Canton Avenue, Milton 4, February 12, 2019, for the Head-to-Toe Fascinator Workshop Event, March 14, 2019, for the Opening Reception Patios Exhibition Event, and March 20, 2019, for the New England's Sparkling Past Event.
Second.
A discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, 16, boards and committees, reappointments to the Municipal Broadband Committee. I'll, I'll, I'll read, go ahead, do you want to read it?
Sure. I move to reappoint Joseph Chamberlain of 131 Clap Street, Mark Day of 70 Cliff Road, Stephen Paxia of 1027 Brushhill Road, and John Sullivan of 334 Elmwood Avenue to serve on the Municipal Broadband Committee through January of 2020, and are you supposed to be on there as well?
Don't you sit on that?
Or no?
No, I'm not on that.
No, 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 okay. So, you're on the Comcast, that's a different one. What are you on?
Yeah, this is, this is municipal broadband.
All right, okay. We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. 17, boards and committees, reappointments to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
I'm happy to read this one, but do we have a typo here? It says, we're appointing you, Richard, but.
I know. I thought the same thing.
But Melinda is currently serving, so.
I think it's Melinda, not you.
It is.
That's a typo. Okay, so want to re, want to insert her name? Because I talked to the same thing, I'm like, what did I do?
You've got another committee. All right, so I'll move that we reappoint town administrator Michael Dennehy, director of the DPW, Chase Berkeley, health director Caroline Kinsella, environmental coordinator Hillary Waite, select board member Melinda Collins, Jonathan Boynton, 6 Russell Wood Road, M. G. Serenoglu of 2 Elliott Circle, and John Driscoll of 718 Randolph Avenue to serve on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee through January of 2020.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This wasn't my first item, but just, I need to take a timeout and thank all the people that are on boards and committees in this town. I mean, just tonight here, we saw the historical commission. Historical commission has been to the Milton Yard Club probably 10 times as a group since June. The Affordable Housing Trust, select woman, all the work that's being done there, the Audit Committee, we heard from them tonight, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and numerous others. It's that boards and committees and volunteerism in this town that makes my job a lot easier, and I think it makes the town run a lot smoother, and I, but we simply saw it here tonight, and I don't think, I give them enough credit every day, but I just want to thank everybody who serves on a board and a committee in the town, and there's so many others that I left off, but don't forget our meeting at 7:00 AM tomorrow, Mike.
7:00 AM.
I think you got that.
I forgot, not that one. Set my alarm.
Also, the Green Communities Grant, I sent around some information for today.
10 minutes before he turns into a pumpkin.
Great work that was done. They got almost $260,000 in Green Communities Award last year. Getting that money is hard, and then spending it in the timeframe that the state wants you to spend it in is almost equally as hard, so Bill Clark, Bill Ritchie, and all their team members, Diane Colligan, Bob Mahew, Lauren Massier, all the people that make that work. Great projects going on in the schools, Council on Aging got some new LED lighting, boilers, numerous things that happen year in and year out, and I'm sure they're already working on the application for FY '20, so great work done by them. Street hockey infrastructure grant that was secured by Senator Timonti.
There's been a lot of buzz in town since I became town administrator, but before that, about providing that type of infrastructure through town. It's a very popular way. Probably turned into a skating rink over the last week, but I think it's great money, and we'll be filing that application with the state soon. I want to remind everyone about the annual election that'll take place on Tuesday, April 30th. Nomination papers were made available yesterday, and they're due back Tuesday, March 12th. And I would lastly like to thank Trace Desmond, Cemetery Superintendent, and Dave Perdiros, Parks Director, who combined for over 50 years of service to this town, who recently retired. So, wish them well in their future endeavors and thank them for their time with the town.
I agree. Thank you. Is it?
That's all I have.
Good. So, I just want to thank you for logistics, getting us all to the MMA convention. It was, it's all old faces, but it was very good. There were some great presentations. There were, there was a lot of useful information, and one of the things that I was very happy to see is how many of our partners that we interact with that were there. Beta, Howardstein Hudson, MAPC, just, I can't remember, Bayburn on the log force. There were just so many there that Maya, Lenny Keston's office, and Murphy Hesse, just, I was very happy to see that, that obviously, we're doing, we have partnerships in government with some of the leaders, and that said a lot about all the good things that we do do here. I also want to thank Katie and all of the members, Charlotte, guys, the chair, all the work that they've been doing on the MPIC, particularly in the Lower Mills area, the joint meeting that we had. I don't know if Michael circulated yet. I've thought about this for a long time. I wrote, I broke just my thoughts into three areas, long-term, short-term, and operational, and just kind of wrote some of the things I think we could start on. We could help really facilitate just some of the smaller ones quickly to help make them happen, some of the things with the farmer's market and a crew, and I think we need to do this, and, but I think it's a great vision for it. It's an important area, and I thought about, again, here we were at Lower Mills on Chronicle last night, so it's an important part of the community and is all of that. I want to thank Reverend Dr. Conley Hughes once again, the Milton to Faith, and everyone for the hospitality and hosting the MLK. I know we were all, I said poor Michael who was stuck, couldn't get home.
One of the many travelers that's stuck on the East Coast.
And it was a great event. It was a freezing cold night, and to everyone who came out brave, that it was not easy to walk in or out of there. But I want to congratulate the four high school kids who were singled out for both their artistic contributions in there, poetry, and those four, Conifoley, Ina Faye, Grace Kelly, and Caroline Gannon. As I talked in my comments, you know, hate is something we see in the world every day. We saw it again today in Florida in a horrific incident in a bank, and, but it seems that even when it touches around us, and just look at the incident with this young girl in Childstown being taken, and how quickly that community came together to find her. She's home with her parents today, and when hate does rear its head, love seems to always suppress it and crush it, so congrats to all of them, and especially to Superintendent Coleman, and everyone from Milton Public Schools. That was just a very good thing, so that's all I have. Mr. Rice.
No, I'm good.
Don't you have a 7:00 o'clock meeting?
I do.
Well, that.
I have no report.
Well, at that point, so, future agenda items, anything? So, we're going to continue that with Chief Grant. Anything else important you want to get on?
We have executive session with Cook and Company on the 6th as well.
I have-
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, one thing that we have to get on the agenda, and it's been seven weeks, we have to get on the agenda, the approval of the Parks Commissioner for the Youth Task Force. This has been something that I've been trying to get on for a long time. I don't want to make a motion to have it put on, but it, you know, I've been trying for seven weeks. We had a commitment a month ago that it was going to be on today. We need to have it on next time.
So, I put it with, I did put it with the MOU, so it'll be on.
All right, so just need that on next time, and then on the MOU is the second thing. That's important to get on because of the timing. And the MOU, just to flesh it out for him, the MOU relates to the First Congregational Church and the drop-in youth center opportunity that the town has and the church has, and it looks like the opportunity for a great collaboration, and because the church is getting ready to go out for their capital campaign and hopefully a build-out, you know, to the extent that we can move our side along, if we decide to, we may have some, a very good venue opportunity by next September. So, those are the two things that I, if, we really need to get on the agenda for September 6th.
You can go home now.
February 6th.
You can go home.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Future? Are we good?
I think, there was a couple of things that came up at the different sessions at the MMA meeting, and one of them that seemed a little time-sensitive was the cable wireless boxes. Mike and I were at the municipal law conference, and they talked about aesthetic design as an April date, if you really want to do that, and apparently, there's not any model guidelines anywhere around the country yet. Everyone's confronting this issue at the same time, so that might be something that we either want to briefly talk about it, or maybe we just contact Town Council's office and get some advice on that before we put it on an agenda. But that, as well as the short-term rentals, the local tax, anything that came up at those sessions, we were all at different ones. There may be things that we want to flesh out and bring to the board, and-
On the boxes, it's the 5G boxes, and setting some guidelines for, you know, what they can look like on the polls, and there is, there is an April date for that.
Is it that big a difference from what boxes today look like?
Could be, if you don't have any guidelines.
Okay. And no one seems to have? Was that a crowded, you both went to that room? Was it crowded, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Who was the presenter?
Donna Brewer, who is from the Myers, I can't remember the name of the firm, and then there was a city solicitor from Woburn.
I think so.
And then one other woman.
There was also a session on public rights of way that I don't think any of us got to, so we may want to take a look at who was presenting there and have a little conversation, see. I think the app might still have, if there were any materials, so I can grab those.
Yeah, if not, they're all supposed to be up on the website this week.
Oh, they are this week? Okay, good, okay.
The other thing, too, was, I know we have more. I went to the marijuana one, which was, I told you, it was packed, you couldn't even get in the door, and there's two issues you need to, we have the, is it, we're in a one-day moratorium still, or?
No, we're in a permanent ban.
In a permanent ban on the recreational, on both?
Recreational.
Not medical?
No, we have a bi-ler on medical.
We have a bi-ler, so I think we're probably going to see another request come sooner versus later on a medical. That's what they, and we probably need to at least talk about and be prepared for it. I was, that room was packed, packed. Okay. That's it. Okay, so at this point, Citizen Speak response.
I'll talk to Mr. Joe Henning tomorrow. A little bit of what Amy had talked about, including the useful life into the article, is applicable here. So, the fire truck was one of the pieces of equipment that was bonded over a useful life that didn't maximize town dollars. It went from five years to three years because there are a couple of bans. Basically, we thought we were getting a 15-year mortgage, and we got a three-year mortgage because it's, you have to go back to that town meeting article and make sure that you follow through with the useful life, and that was a piece of the problem, but I'll certainly speak to Mr. Joe Henning tomorrow.
To his, this predates anyone, I think, maybe even Katie on this board when this happened. No, maybe not Katie, but it wasn't, it just, I could see how it could happen. It just was a cross number. They just thought the fire truck was three years versus 15 years, and that one mistake, so.
But I think it's important that it's not really a mistake, and that's what the speaker was really alluding to, it being an error. The default, from what I understand from Tom Harley-
Correct.
-the default useful life is five years. So, that's not wrong. That's what it, that's what the default, that's what anyone would view it as, unless you extend it out, and the problem here is the Capitol Committee's expectation was that it would be bonded over 15 years, not five years. So, it's technically not an error. It was a communication issue, and I don't know where the communication issue was, but there was a communication issue somewhere. So, the speaker at Citizen Speak, but, you know, I think by calling it an error, that's not entirely correct.
You're right, you're right.
Well, he said he didn't understand.
Yes, that's right.
From the article, and I think, too, one of his questions was, is this a multi-year error? Was this going on? And no, it was a one-time event, and I think Amy's idea about including that, because then, you know, we're seeing it, we're approving it, and it goes in the warrant, and then that won't, that shouldn't be, it's to happen, actually. It's a good system.
Especially when you go on out to bond every two years. So, some of that older stuff, if it's not fresh in your memory what the useful life of it was, to Select Woman Conlin's point, it defaults to what the state general law says it should be, and then you end up with a three-year mortgage when you think you have a 15-year mortgage.
Right, because we keep, and when I say error, I mean an error in communication, so we push our fire trucks all 15 years, not five, which the state allows, and that's the problem. They've put us in a hole. And to Amy's credit, I will say this, she's very conscious, I mean, she, you can just, when we go to the meetings, I mean, she's, and she's very diligent about trying to dot every i, cross every t, and understanding that the holes or the pitfalls that come with this are sometimes very deep, as we're seeing now, so. Okay.